To the city manager, I think we need to upgrade the mayor. I think he's sitting in the audience. And I hope you will, so I don't have to run the meeting because I have my document for that. Lauren or Crystal, you can switch over.
I am out of the audience and now in the bullpen. Well, I hope everyone's had their coffee tonight. Well, I've got seven o'clock, so I guess we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, April 27, 2021. And if Ms. Burgess, if you can give us a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Thank you very much. And now if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Do we have an approval of the minutes?
Move to approve. Councilmember Harvey.
This is Councilmember Ford, our second. The both of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, that was for both as well?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, if you would kindly.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, now I'm gonna go into announcements. If you bear with me for just a moment, I need to stop another video in the other room because I'm getting too much echo. Please bear with me for a second. Thank you for your indulgence. Okay, announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. C T deals on the web at katatit.org. It's our citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code to zip code 949312888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointment by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@katatit.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And we need an approval of the final agenda. Do we have any changes to that, Mr. Obed?
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes.
Thank you very much. And now we will move on to citizens business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. Okay, Ms. Burgess, would you let us know if we have any citizen comment tonight, citizen business?
Thank you, Mayor. For our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon by using the icon on your smart device or desktop. You can also dial *9 if you're using just your telephone. George Berich, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Hope you can hear me okay. This is former City Councilman George Berich. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, we can.
Thank you, council. A couple issues. The first issue is, I understand, I was out of town a couple weeks ago at your last meeting. I understand Chief Parish gave a brief report about the state of the police department, and he said that he was at, his department was at full staffing. I got a call from a couple officers who told me that's just not the case, and that one of the experienced, longtime dispatchers, police dispatchers, left her job at Kattati a few weeks ago under dubious circumstances. And I understand she's lawyered up, and she's planning to file suit against Kattati. So, you know, that's here nor there. I'm more concerned with the fact that Chief Parish is telling the council, his bosses, that he's at full staffing when they're, when he's not at full staffing. And I would ask you all to ask the city manager either after this meeting, it's not on the agenda tonight, what the hell is going on about this report and what's going on with that dispatcher? We want some honest information. The second thing about the police department, I got a call from another police officer who said that one of our police officers, while on duty, driving a police cruiser, ran into an innocent motorist in a Toyota Prius, significant damage done. I don't remember if anybody was injured in the accident, but the cause of the accident apparently was because the officer was texting while driving. Okay? And I would like you to look into this. I know the department has been very adamant about enforcing texting while driving. And if one of our police officers was in fact involved in an accident and was at fault for texting and driving, I would like our council to look into it and investigate what's going on. Okay? Thank you very much. Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment. Oh, I take that back. Lisa Moore, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So Lisa Moore, 8592 Lakewood Avenue. I'm calling in tonight because I have an issue with the Daily Axe Pocket Park next door to me. So this has been an issue over quite a few years now, as you all know, who know me, that at some point, Daily Axe is not really taking care of the park. I know the last time it was cleaned up, it was cleaned up by PMJ. So this is part of the park plan. And at some point, I'd like to have this park be just an official park in Kattati and not a volunteer maintenance park in Kattati. It was never really sanctioned to be a food forest the way it is. Trees dying, it's overgrown. And then every so often, every six months, somebody comes in and pulls weeds, and then six months later, it looks like, like it needs to be done again. So I know nobody can see it from their backyard other than Mayor Moore, but this is now becoming such an issue with the neighbors that at some point, we're, you know, gonna, all of us are gonna start to say something. So I know this isn't the park plan. I know I'm supposed to get a, we're supposed to get a path through there. I know we're supposed to get a bench, but it's really about the maintenance of this park and maybe reimagining it into a different park, maybe a community park with some, some boxes in there where neighbors can have their own kind of plot, or maybe, you know, putting some grass back into it and ma- making it a more of a passive park where people can sit. But right now, it just looks like a, basically an empty lot with some trees and some bushes, and not a lot of people go in there, and it's just kind of an eyesore. So I would appreciate that being put onto the agenda. I know I've asked for it before, and it's not gone onto the agenda, but I would appreciate it going on to a council agenda so you can figure out what's the next step with this park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good, good. So, um, the first two speakers really spoke into what I want to bring up, and that is, once again, from Core, one of our ASCs, an ad hoc committee to support the city council, and perhaps to support the, the police department as well. Wouldn't it be excellent to have a group of citizens looking at the park issue that the woman who spoke just before me mentioned, to gather information and then give information to the city council? That's something that a citizens committee might do. The other issue that was raised with regard to the police department, police oversight could be a very helpful situation here, and it is also one of our ASCs from Core. But this is something that a citizens committee might well look into in support of both the department and the city council. I want to bring those up, and I will keep bringing up the ad hoc committee idea with Core. I know that Damian is looking into that. And I am looking forward to a report. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Moore, I'm just gonna let you know that Lisa Moore did put her hand back up. Would you like me to check back in?
Yes, unless it's the consent calendar items.
Ms. Moore, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, I lowered my hand. Sorry, Lauren.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will move on to consent calendar. Are there any councilmembers wishing to pull any of those items? Let me change my view. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand, so.
There are a few hands up.
There we go. Um, pardon me. There we go. Okay, Councilmember Sparks.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about item 8C, so I'd like to pull that if possible.
Okay. Councilmember Ford.
I just needed to ask about protocol. Isn't a, isn't a question about an item okay without pulling it? Or do we have to pull it even to ask a question?
I, it depends on, I think, the brevity of the question, maybe? Is it something on procedural nature, Ms. Sparks? Councilmember Sparks?
It was a question about, could we ask PG&E to do something additionally that wasn't listed on the, originally? I don't know if that counts as procedural.
No, I don't think so. No, I think we could go ahead and pull that item. Okay, so we will go ahead and pull 8C. With that in mind, I would be looking for With that in mind, I would be looking for a motion to approve 8A, B, and D.
So moved.
I'll second. Go ahead, Mark.
So we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Council member Harvey.
Yes.
Council member Sparks.
Yes.
Council member Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We should show that as 5-0. And we will go ahead and pull then number C, item C, 8C. And what was your question, council member Sparks?
Thank you, Mayor. I was a little concerned. It looked like that this is gonna take about two months. And I was thinking about the residences on Mendelson that back up right to the location on the south extension of Page Street where that's gonna be used as a staging ground for the PG&E vehicles. And I was wondering if it would be possible, one of our one of our best practices listed in the noise element of the general plan is for construction contractors. I know this isn't really a construction contractor, but at least relating to noise, "Construction contractors shall designate a noise disturbance coordinator with the telephone number posted prominently at the site." I was wondering if it would be possible to ask PG&E to do that? If they'd be willing to? I'm just thinking of the people whose houses are directly adjacent to that construction for a couple of months.
Thank you, council member Sparks. You did say Mendelson backing up to Page Street?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Park Street. The park, parks, the little, the defunct portion of Park Street that's south of Myrtle where it's gonna be used as the staging area.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, Mayor, I can.
Mr. Obay, would you like to address that?
Sure. So one thing that you probably did notice is that there is a bit of a setback required, input setback from the fence line. But to your question specifically, you know, Craig can jump in here if I'm misspeaking, but I think it would be probably fine to have a sign with at least a broad deck contact. It's not that unusual if the public have some sort of question or concern that they wanna direct toward PG&E.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure that staging is also equivalent to construction versus just having their equipment there. So I don't know that you would have the noise element concern that you might normally have with the construction.
Okay, yeah, it looked like the construction would be fairly close to that staging area as well. But I took your point.
And it will be eventually when they get to that point. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on 8C? If not, I would be happy to entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second. It's council member Ford.
Thank you. Yes.
I happened to see some hands up. I'm not sure if it's on this item, but I just, since we pulled it, I think we need to take public comment.
Thank you, council member Harvey. Ms. Burgess, if you would be so kind.
Thank you. Michael Pinkerton, go ahead.
Well, I had a comment on an unrelated topic, but I just wasn't sure. I was just figuring out how to get in on the Zoom. And I think the consent calendar kind of started before I had a chance to make the comment. So it's not related to the current topic.
Mr. Pinkerton, as a courtesy, we will go ahead and continue to vote on this. And then I'll come back and go ahead and allow you to open a public comment one more time.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Burgess, could you do a roll call on that?
Council member Harvey.
Yes.
Council member Sparks.
Yes.
Council member Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. And if the council will beg my indulgence, I will open and back up for public comment for just a moment for those that may have come in just a little bit late. Citizens business. Ms. Burgess, if you would be so kind.
Michael Pinkerton, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I live at 120 Kepel Way in Katati. And I was responding to a couple of redwood trees that are scheduled to be cut down. I guess it's something that's been discussed since 2019. It's at Aguirre and Myrtle. And due to damage that's being caused to the sidewalk there. And I, you know, I was against this. I sent a message to Jim Caldwell. We got a letter in the mail about the fact that these trees were gonna be cut down. And, you know, what was mentioned in the letter was that, you know, it was discussed and there was sort of no feasible alternative to cutting down these redwood trees. And, you know, I asked Jim Caldwell to sort of explain what, why is that the case? You know, just to explain how this feasibility is kind of looked at. And I did not get any response to, that was a second email that I wrote. I didn't get any response to that. And, you know, I just posted a comment about it on Nextdoor. It seems like, in general, a lot of people are in agreement that cutting down the redwood trees in Katati is not a good course of action. And if there's really any way around it, like I've seen in some other towns where sidewalks are simply just built further out. And it creates a lack of uniformity in one sense, but it creates a lot of charm and it's quite beneficial. And there's a lot of redwood trees around, I think, that are gonna cause problems to sidewalks in the future. And I believe that we should prioritize the trees over the sidewalks in this situation. So that's my comment.
Thank you. For the record, I believe it's John Caldwell, who is in our planning department. Is that who you were referring to? Okay, looks like he's on. Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to our.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, I was just gonna say if you'd like, I could just give a, just a quick summary of that situation, if it's helpful.
Certainly.
Yeah, so there's, the intersection we're talking about has four redwood trees that are planted immediately behind the sidewalk, which is not a great place to plant redwood trees because they grow quickly and the roots destroy the sidewalk surface. And so there are four trees there. And what we were talking about was two of the four trees. And they have caused significant damage. We got a complaint about it. And this was back before 2019. And we painted it out to temporarily address the safety issue. It's a significant uplift, as you probably can imagine, with the redwood trees. State law does require that the adjacent property owner, or in this case, the landscape and lighting assessment district that these trees are located in, are responsible for fixing the problem. But if they don't correct it, then the city has a legal obligation to correct it for them and basically bill the adjacent property owner or lighting the landscape assessment district. So in 2019, we did hold a meeting with members of that district. There's like 35 of them there. We mailed out to all 35 and held a meeting to discuss the issue. And after that, we explored various options to reconstruct the sidewalk. But we, with the various options we looked at, there was nothing that was that was really feasible to do in trying to save the redwood trees, the two and the four that we're talking about. So that's why, you know, we are where we are now is that, you know, either, well, the trees are gonna have to be, are gonna have to be, I think, at least in my opinion, removed. And whether that's, you know, soon or a year from now, it's gonna have to happen one way or the other because it's just gonna continue to cause damage and be a problem, so. That's in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions with authority, but this isn't a, and I do have to keep it brief.
Thank you, Mr. Obay. And hopefully you might be able to reach out to Mr. Pinkerton after the meeting or down the road and discuss anything further. So thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move on to direction of future agenda items. Do we currently have any? Vice Mayor Landman?
Let's see here. Yes, make sure I'm unmuted. Yeah, I have actually two tonight. One is something, it's not that new under the sun. It's something that Petaluma did recently. And it's not a terribly strong action, but I think it'd be a worthwhile one to take. And what they did in early April was just to agree to send a resolution, urging Calpers to divest Calpers Holdings and the fossil fuel companies from statewide pension investments and to offer member agencies portfolio options consisting of high-performing environmental, social, and corporate governance investments that exclude investments in fossil fuel companies. So if my colleagues were open to it, obviously, this is, it's something that's important, but it certainly doesn't have to come right away very soon in a meeting. But I think that might be a worthwhile thing to consider. The impact, of course, I like to think the Calpers will do whatever the mighty city of Katati tells them. But I think instead, this is just doing what we should all do, put our thumb on the scale to try and help with things. So that was one. The other I wanted to ask for was, we have, it was brought up a public comment about the longstanding problems with Dailyax Pocket Park with the concept, which was a noble one, with the outcome that has been historically problematic. And I think we did ask either have that, a better resolution found for that perhaps, or to have it come forward. I think, seeing as we're looking at significant work in our parks, this does need to come back because this does not look to me to be a problem that's gonna fix itself. I walk by there constantly and note the same issues and have for some years. So maybe it's a good time for us now to be able to look at it. This might be the perfect time. So I'd like to see that come back if my colleagues agree, whenever staff has the time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman. Council member Ford.
Thank you. So Vice Mayor Landman took one of mine. The other one I want to mention, what I thought his first one was going to be is another thing that Petaluma did recently was to restrict any future development of gas stations in Petaluma. And I think that is an important thing for us to think about signing on to. As Vice Mayor Landman pointed out, you know, Katati's thumb on the scale of justice might be a small lever, but if we join with other cities, I believe we all received a letter from various residents encouraging us to consider this action. I think it's incumbent on us to do so. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Ford. Council member Harvey.
Boy, it seems like there's a lot of ceiling of items. I was gonna bring up what Ben just brought up, so thanks, Ben. I kind of have a question related to the item that Mark brought up. And I guess Damian can probably answer this. What is the status of our situation with Dailyax? I don't recall seeing that of late. So if you could kind of enlighten me, that would be helpful.
Okay, Mayor, if you don't mind, I, so.
Absolutely.
So with Dailyax, they're doing mostly education and workshops in terms of pocket park maintenance. They're not doing that any longer. This spring, we transitioned, probably a month ago, I think it was about a month ago, to full-time, to basically putting PJM there in charge of maintenance, full-time. Because before PJM would be in there, in and out of there at various times when it needed, when it needed significant maintenance. But as of about a month ago, I think it was, PJM is now formally in charge of that park like they are the others in terms of maintaining it. But there are planned improvements that have not happened yet. And that's also the other part of that same question.
I think it would be beneficial for everyone to know what that maintenance schedule is on that park. Is it like the other parks where it's weekly? Or is it less frequent or, you know, whatever? What have we contracted for?
You know, it was Matt on, though I don't know off my head what they came in at unless, I don't know, Craig, if you happen to know, otherwise I can get back to you with that information.
That would be perfect. And I think that, oh, weekly? Okay, so it sounds like possibly that's not happening. So maybe that's an item to follow up on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. So now we'll move on to public hearings and introduction of an ordinance to amend the land use code to allow for the development and regulation of residential cottage housing projects. Mr. House, I believe this might be yours.
Senior Planner JP Harries will be presenting this item.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. This is JP Harries, senior planner with the city of Katati. And tonight, we're introducing an ordinance, presenting an ordinance, a proposed ordinance, to address certain housing opportunities in the city of Katati. This is Agenda Item 10A, and it's the packet, or the staff report starts on packet page 53. Lauren, can you go to the next slide, please? So just some background and context. This is part of the effort that's being funded by, or reimbursing our effort, is SB 2 Planning Grant. This came out of the 15-bill housing package in 2017, which was aimed at addressing the state's housing shortage and high housing costs. Part of that was the Building Jobs and Homes Act, which included a $75 recording fee on real estate documents. That fee that's collected is helping to fund grants which were distributed or made available to cities. We applied in 2019 and was awarded a $160,000 grant, which was the maximum amount we could be awarded. And below, it's gonna basically fund four efforts. One is the ADU JAD, JADU ordinance, which we adopted in February, March of 2020. And this is the next component, which we call the Cottage Housing Ordinance. And this would add Section 17.42.125 to the land use code. Chapter 17.42 is the chapter of the municipal code, which regulates a lot of various different uses within the city, ranging from animal keeping to cannabis to accessory structures on someone's property. In this case, it's a different form of housing. And then after this, you're going to see objective design guidelines come forward and some proposals to generate or allow for buy-right multifamily housing in certain situations. So this is a part of the package that we've been working on for a little bit. Next slide, please, Lauren. So there are, the image down on the right is kind of, it's an image of kind of what we're after with it. You can see homes arranged around a common area. The parking in this case is away from the homes. And then down in kind of the lower right-hand is a community building. These books appear, it looks like. But that's an illustration of the concept that's embedded in this ordinance. So our primary goals are, one, to promote sustainable development practices through smaller, more efficient housing and effective use of the residential land that is available in Katati. To diversify the city's housing stock by providing for a housing type that is affordable and responds to changing household sizes. To encourage infill development. And part of what we're going to talk about tonight is opportunities to increase density above the underlying zoning district. That largely, that density increase largely is driven by the fact that these homes are, they're limited on how big they can be. And in order to be economically viable for developers to build them, they need to increase the density. They can't just build a couple small homes. They can't just build a couple of small homes, uh, without re-cooping some of that cost. So it's an opportunity to, uh, uh, to make them pencil. Uh, four is to provide, uh, centrally located and functional common open space that fosters a sense of community as well as openness within the cottage development. Uh, to provide, uh, private areas around the individual dwellings. That provides for a diversity in landscape design as well as, uh, fosters a sense of ownership and participation in the development, um, itself. And, um, also our goal is to maintain the character of existing residential neighborhoods. And we do this through the fairly, um, objective design standards that are in and are part of this, uh, proposed ordinance. And then to allow for housing projects that, uh, we feel are reflective of some of Khatati's historic developments. Um, I think when you start to look at the ordinance, you'll see, um, that it's not far from what Khatati already has. Um, one of the tools that we used to have in our land use code was, uh, the ability to do a planned unit development or PUD. Um, that tool's not available in our code anymore. And so we're looking at other ways, um, uh, where we can get creative for, for promoting housing opportunities. The next slide, please, Lauren. Another big target of this ordinance is to go, uh, to provide a housing, um, at the area called the missing middle. So there seems to be, you know, there, there is affordable housing being generated, uh, on the apartment side. And then there's people that have the means to buy, purchase single family dwellings. But some of the, the people that are really getting left out, folks that can't get, uh, don't qualify for deep restricted housing, yet can't afford a low density, large, single family dwelling, are what we call the missing middle. And the, these two images here illustrate, excuse me, um, housing, uh, products that, that really target at the missing middle. And they range from accessory dwelling units, cottage housing clusters, duplexes, fourplexes, internal conversions of large projects. Um, and this ordinance, though it, it's called the cottage housing and it kind of really looks similar to the cottage cluster, it actually kind of allows for all of these type of developments, uh, that are targeted at the missing middle. Uh, next slide, please. So what's a cottage housing? So various characteristics of the cottage housing, you know, they tend to be compact dwellings, uh, ranging from a thousand to sixteen hundred square foot in size. Um, they can be smaller than that as well. Um, there's common open space requirements and the units are generally encouraged to be clustered around the common open space. Now typically that, uh, common open space will have shared amenities, uh, such as, or it could be any, whatever the community finds to be desirable. It could be garden space, it could be, uh, passive recreation. It could be more active recreation like, um, uh, like ba- a basketball court or a swimming pool or could be community building, um, and space around it. So, but it, it, it relies on the shared amenities. It also, uh, has a private open space requirement and which in many cases intended to provide a transition, um, from the common space to the person, you know, the private space to the actual home itself. It typically would allow for the units to be placed much closer together than what you see in a regular single family dwelling, uh, neighborhood. It include incorporates pedestrian pathways. Um, it can use a variety of type of, uh, parking, uh, from garage door periphery, uh, parking situations. Uh, the, it's not uncommon to see ADUs above garages. And typically because of the unit sizes being smaller, um, there is a density increase that's permissible. Um, they tend to foster a strong sense of community between the neighbors. Um, another name for the cottage housing projects around the country are, um, is pocket neighborhood. Um, is another term that, that's used. Uh, it allows for various architectural styles. So even though we refer to it as cottage housing, um, it doesn't mean that it has to be country cottage. It just really, uh, puts the emphasis on good coordinated site planning, um, with smaller units, uh, made available. Next slide, please, Lauren. And these are some images of, that captures some of the ideas, um, and kind of on the four corners, you can see, uh, that transition from common space to public space to actual porches of the homes, which provide these little layers of privacy, as well as the communal things like the, 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 the garden on the, in the top and the bottom middle photos. And, uh, that center photos kind of shows what, uh, an ADU above a garage can look like and kind of consolidated garage area. Next slide, please. And then if you dive into the ordinance, these are of kind of the key, uh, development, uh, standards that are included in there. And I'll, I'll go through these. Um, it would be allowed in pretty much all residential zoning districts with the exception of, um, rural residential. So this, uh, this particular housing project wouldn't be permissible in that area. It would require a use permit, so there would be, uh, a, yeah, a minimum of public hearing before the planning commission. Any kind of proposal that included subdivision, uh, would also come to city council. Subdivisions are allowed. Uh, there are some provisions to allow for no street frontage. So you can have those homes that are, you know, surrounding the common area, but they don't have to be on a, on an actual road, uh, like our code requires today. As well, um, it doesn't force a minimum lot size. So it steers away from the single family, um, kind of lot block subdivision that you're used to seeing. Uh, we're proposing, uh, minimum and maximum unit sizes of seven hundred square feet minimum, sixteen hundred square feet maximum. Uh, density would allow for two times the max density allowed in the underlying zoning district. Uh, they must meet the minimum density standard, however, of the underlying zoning district. So they have to at least meet the minimum and they could go up, uh, to, up to two times. Now I will say, when, when, though the ordinance allows for up to two times density, there's other limiting factors that come into play, um, that will make some projects, even though it's our goal to try to get more housing, there are certain things within the ordinance that will, uh, make it a challenge to meet it in some cases on certain lots. And those two things are, one, the open space requirements that, that I'm going to discuss in a minute, as well as, um, the land coverage standards, which we have today. So this ordinance doesn't propose to amend land coverage standards, um, uh, change anything from the way it is today within the various zoning districts. Uh, so that actually provides a limitation on just how much development can go on a particular parcel. All right, moving on, um, max height. This is fairly consistent with our residential zoning, which is units, uh, limited to twenty-eight feet. Uh, garages could be limited to sixteen feet unless they placed an ADU on top of the garage. Two-story maximums, uh, in the, in the, on the, uh, units. And the upper floor must have less square footage than the lower floor. That's to control massing, um, of the buildings. And accessory structures would be limited to sixteen feet in height. Uh, attached units, they are allowed. So this is like the duplex, triplex, fourplex. Um, but we chose not to allow them in the RVL zoning district. We felt that in the RVL zoning district, um, allowing attached units, uh, would, would take, remove it from the character, may interrupt the character that's already out there. Uh, we talk about, we use what's called transect planning in Khatati, which means that we, you know, moving from the outer part of the, uh, of the city is lower density and it goes higher and higher density as you move, uh, towards the, the downtown area. So, um, we wanted to try to maintain that transect, uh, pattern of, uh, planning that we use. And that's why we're, uh, limiting, um, not, not, not allowing for attached units in the, uh, low, very low density zoning districts. Let's see, um. Building separation. This is, uh, we use this instead of, uh, setback requirements because, um, within the development, there, you know, there wouldn't be setbacks applied to the individual home. So we use a, a building separation requirement. Uh, right now we're proposing eight feet, uh, and proposing that it can be reduced to six feet, um, if they can, uh, get some additional open space, uh, by, by reducing, uh, the building separation. Lot coverage, like I mentioned previously, um, is the same as the underlying, uh, zoning district. So if you're in, uh, let's say residential very low density and you're on a, uh, property that's two or three acres or more, um, you're only going to have ten percent coverage. Um, if you're in an NL district, uh, neighborhood low density, um, you're able to have forty percent coverage. This ordinance, uh, maintains those land coverage standards. Um, open space, there is an open space requirement, um, which exceeds our, our other open space requirements in our code. And that's five hundred square feet of common open space per unit, plus four hundred square feet of private open space, uh, per unit. Um, and as I mentioned, the common open space should be developed, uh, with amenities for passive or active recreational use. Uh, the frontage type does require a covered porch. This is consistent, um, with, uh, development standards that we currently have for residences. Um, it does have a minimum depth requirement and square footage requirement, uh, which is there to make sure that it's a usable porch. Uh, we want people to use the porch, uh, not just put a little, uh, something out up front that looks like a porch, but is not usable. Uh, parking, this maintains the, the parking rules that we have for residential projects, um, all throughout the city. It is two spaces per, uh, unit, um, and in multifamily type or larger developments, plus fifteen percent for guests, one space per ADU, uh, but no parking for JADUs. And, uh, one of those spaces of the two must be covered. And also I should be, you know, alert the council that ADU parking may not actually be required because there are certain state law exemptions and, um, most of Khatati falls within those exemptions. So even though we say one space per ADU, in, I would say nearly almost all cases, uh, that parking would not be, uh, you would not be, need to provide that parking for the ADU. Um, ADU and JADU development, it is allowed, uh, consistent with state law. It allows one ADU and one JADU per, uh, primary dwelling. Um, if you are constructing a JADU, it must be contained within the primary unit. And our proposal is that it cannot cause that unit to exceed the maximum square footage. So, uh, a JADU is limited to five hundred square feet. If you built it in a, in a sixteen hundred foot, um, unit, that unit would have to remain, I mean, we have a sixteen hundred foot max. You can't go add the five hundred to the sixteen hundred until the twenty-one hundred square foot unit. If that makes sense. So it must be contained within the unit. Solar, there is a solar requirement and, um, the solar requirement is that, that they must provide for at least fifty percent of the electrical, anticipated electrical demand, uh, within the entire, uh, development. And EV charging is required for half of parking spaces, but we would require all parking to be equipped with infrastructure, uh, to support future charging stations. And those are really some of the key, uh, elements of it. Um, it really comes down, when you, you know, when we would be looking in these in the future, it would come down to just real careful site planning, working with, uh, a developer, a lot of, probably a lot of back and forth to, uh, to come up with plans that, that meet this, these type of units or this type of, uh, what we're after here. Next slide, please. And this is just another image. This is, um, up in Shoreline, Washington, place called Greenwood and the Cottages, but it captures a lot of, uh, of what, what, what this ordinance would, would promote. And then following this, next slide, please, Lauren. So, um, one of the things we did early on in the, um, in, in our, in working through this ordinance is we, we had a first draft of, of the ordinance. Oh, and I, let me say also that we have, have, we had two public workshops with the planning commission as well as, as well as a public hearing. But prior to the workshops, after, when we had the first draft of the ordinance, we sent it, um, out to, uh, some certain architects and asked them to, to basically review the ordinance and come up with some site plans of how they would, um, react to the ordinance. We didn't really hold their hand. We didn't go through a review process with them. We just asked them to interpret the ordinance and provide site plans. So the site plans that are going to follow are that very first kind of reaction that we got. But what they do is they, they really kind of provide, I think, some concept ideas. So they, they're not the actual site plans that we would approve necessarily, but they pro- they provide some idea of how the development might look, um, within, within existing neighborhoods. And so the, all these come from actual lots that are currently underutilized, um, in the city. And so that's, those are the ones, some of them, ones that we selected. So this particular lot is at one eighty-eight Burtel Avenue. And this kind of, uh, trapazoid rectangular, uh, lot is, you can see it here. And then next slide, please, Lauren. And this is one of the proposals. So you can see the, uh, it utilizes the common open space, um, down low or down towards the, the bottom of the hill there. And it actually has a little more of what you would call more traditional single family. And it puts a lot of the actual, uh, very active amenities like a ball court and a swimming pool and tennis court, um, up towards the, in playgrounds, actually, up towards the, to the right in here or at the, kind of at the top of the hill on this actual property. Next slide, please, Lauren. This is, uh, a different, uh, architect's view of how that might work. Here they use a long consolidated parking area and then everyone walks into the units, but still tries to maintain this, um, the homes are directed out towards these green spaces. Next slide, please. This is the property at the corner of Old Red and Eucalyptus, um, recently been for sale. And next slide. And this was one of the proposals for how they might work with that property. They actually capture Ward Drive and, you know, connect it through to Eucalyptus. They get rid of the access on Old Red, but you can start to see that it utilizes both an attached units and detached units, um, as well as incorporates a little bit what looks more traditional single family with the, more of the cottage housing elements with the, with the common open space. Next slide. This is, uh, up on Cypress Avenue. Next slide. And this was another proposal. Um, I actually almost hesitated about putting it in here because, um, I don't, we wouldn't be able to develop this property. This is in the RVL district, um, which would have a very low land coverage. Um, as well, there's certain things about this thing, like the, the roadways that break up the, the central common open space from the residents. But I included it because, um, the ideas are, in it are still good in that they created what is kind of like six separate smaller, uh, sections or like little kind of little neighborhoods within the neighborhood. And, uh, it's, it's just another way that someone could approach that where they've created these various pockets, uh, within a larger property. This is an eight acre property. This is an eight-acre property. And next slide, please. This is out at, on Old Redwood Highway at 8841. We currently do have an application in, which has been put on hold by the developer, which is to pretty much build the standard single-family dwelling subdivision, similar to what you're seeing there along Fuldier Lane. However, they've been working with us and very patiently waiting for this ordinance to move forward in hopes that they can do a different type of project, one that would be closer in alignment to this cottage housing project. And I'm not sure if Brian's here tonight, but I just want to thank him for his patience in working with us. Next slide, please. And this is kind of the proposal that he put together working with Architect Dan Hale for that particular site and how they might approach it in a cottage housing development process. And here, you can see the elements of more peripheral parking and detached garage parking and then the, obviously, the shared common open space. On the left of that is, if you were to go out to the property, it's quite steep on the left side there. And they decided to use like road plantings, like vineyard or orchard or garden-type things, which works well on slope like that. Next slide, please. And then, kind of to close the presentation, I just want to, you know, run through some of the general plan and housing element policies, which are really that this ordinance supports. And Policy LW 2.2 is to encourage the clustering of housing so that larger areas of open space may be permanently preserved. Encourage social interaction between neighbors in new residential developments by providing opportunities for community gathering in common areas, parks, and neighborhood commercial centers. Encourage a concentration of neighborhood, community, and retail amenities and services within walking distance. Revise the design review guidelines to require clustering or other measures to preserve a sense of openness in new developments that are, especially those that are adjacent to open space or scenic resource areas. Provide new opportunities for community gathering and social interaction. Encourage and when possible, prioritize development of infill and underutilized sites within mostly developed areas, which is largely to minimize the premature extension of infrastructure and also, you know, control sprawl. The housing element policies. City will consider land use redesignation in order to accommodate specific projects while affirming the city's general plan. And make, ensure that the city's development requirements accommodate and provide for available housing sites that are appropriate for a range of income levels and housing types. Require housing developments to provide housing stock at a range of affordability levels. Encourage housing development on existing infill. Ensure the city's development standards. Encourage development of a range of housing types, again, including multifamily, mixed-use, second-unit, single-family. Provide incentives for affordable housing development, including density bonuses, expedited processing. Promote energy efficiency. Encourage energy efficiency and ensure public participation in development of the city housing policies. And the next slide. So, we are recommending adoption of the ordinance. The ordinance is on package page 106. And right before I close, like I mentioned before, we've had two public workshops with the Planning Commission, one in December, another one in January or February. And then, we had a, the actual public hearing in March. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance. And that resolution is included in your packet on page, packet page 66. And next slide, please. And thank you. I'm perfectly available for any questions. And I also want to give special thanks to the folks that are listed here, who were really helpful in helping staff to develop this ordinance, to review various drafts of the ordinance, to prepare site plans. Very helpful for us. And with that, I'll close. And available again for any questions, your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And a special thanks to those other contributors. I'd also like to thank the Planning Commission and the staff there that worked so hard to bring this up and to, and know there were several revisions and they went round and round on that. So, I want to thank them for all their efforts on that and let them know that that does not go unnoticed. So, we do have some questions, I'm sure, from the council. And firsthand, I see up is Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. So, JP, if you could help me with a few things. So, first question, I just want to be sure I'm clear. A Cypress site plan that's in the packet is way denser than it would actually be allowed under this ordinance. Is that correct?
I would say the density, it's like a yes or a no. The density seems about right, but the, what would be a limiting factor in that project is the amount of land coverage that that project proposes. Qatadi measures land coverage, which is impermeable surfaces, all impermeable surfaces. So, any asphalt, concrete, or structure would be counted as impervious surface. And in the, that Cypress site is in the RBL zoning district. And that would have a 10% land coverage limitation. So, if you look at that plan, you know, thumbnailing it, I would say they're probably closer to 40% of the site being covered. So, it would have a lot less development than what's there. But the density is kind of consistent with what you might be. It might be a tad high, but I think it's very consistent with what the ordinance would promote in terms of density. It's just on that particular site, there's other factors that come into play that would drive it down, drive the density level down.
Okay. You know the acreage of that site?
It's not even the... Just a tad over eight acres. I want to say 8.13. It's just a tad over eight.
And the standard RBL was two units per acre?
That's correct.
Thank you. I had another one, but it's left me now. So, I'll come back if I think of it.
That's fine. Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. I'd like to follow on a little bit with what Ben said. I'm generally understanding of this ordinance and see where we're trying to go with it. What struck me was the comments from JP about transit planning and for us to put more dense things around where our transit are and that we want to do infill in mostly like neighborhoods of developed sites. So, where I'm struggling is the RBL designation because most of the RBL is in our more rural areas and abuts to rural parcels, which typically have either some form of animals and some form of farming or wine grapes or different things like that. And so, I'm concerned when we went through the general plan update, I attended all those sessions and there was a lot of discussion about the different areas, especially in the more rural areas, about feathering. And so, a lot of the parcels were discussed in closer to town to have those more be the neighborhood levels and then out as you get more rural to feather those, which is sort of why in the Cypress area, there is a lot of RBL out there. And so, having something going from two per acre to at least four, if not more, per acre is not consistent with maintaining our small-town atmosphere and, you know, rural designation. I'm a little concerned with this 10% coverage and how does that go along with the fact that they are also allowed an ADU and a JADU? And when we spoke about the JADUs, part of what was discussed was that garages, which in that example that you showed, could become JADUs. Are you saying now that that's not possible when we kind of said it was possible? And can an ADU be the same size as a dwelling? Therefore, if we had now four per acre, could there also then be four ADUs all of equal size to that max size? So, can ADU be the same size? So, in the pictures of the cottage thing, it sounded like you're trying to have multiple units, but they were kind of trying to divide the square footage. But that's a little unclear what the square footage can be in these areas on ADUs and JADUs. I'm also, it keeps, and you didn't really talk about it in your, in your presentation, about the SEQA. The SEQA that we went through talked about based upon our current zoning. And by basically, in a lot of these areas, doubling our zoning in these areas, I'm having a hard time understanding how that is not a conflict with the general plan and that we don't have to have an EIR to be able, or revise our EIR because we are, for all intents and purposes, doubling our density on that. So, let's see. I think I will stop for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. JP, did you want to take a stab at those or...
Sure. Sure. I, yeah, I can do that now. So, with respect to the residential very low-density, I am sensitive to your concerns, which is why we took another, you know, we added the restriction of not allowing for attached units because we felt that was moving it too far away from kind of the community character that's out there, which is fairly rural. So, we were sensitive. We said, you know, we want to control at least the form of the development there. It's also why this, we chose not to allow it in rural residential, that, you know, that we just wanted some limitations on where we would place this and it just didn't seem to be appropriate in rural residential area. So, I am sensitive to that. I think, you know, in analyzing the ordinance, we felt because of, you know, because we, and this is kind of related to the SEQA question that you raised, because we were controlling or not allowing for greater intensity of impact on the land through land coverage based mostly, like through land coverage as well as providing ways to protect resources. And in those RBL districts, having such low land coverage areas, we didn't, we felt like that was a controlling factor that worked basically to address those concerns that you have. So, yes, it does go and increase it up to four units per acre possible, but not within the entire zoning district. I mean, it would only be on certain areas where people choose to do this type of development. This type of development won't always be the type of development that someone wants to do because it does have a lot of extra requirements on them. That's what I can say about that. Regarding the ADU and JD, JADU has to be within, within the primary dwelling. In some cases, if the garage is actually attached to the dwelling, then you might see the JADU become, you know, integrated with the garage, the way we interpret the law. But, so let's take the example you gave where you have four units and then four JADUs. The JADUs within the ordinance are limited to 800 square feet. As well, there's another provision which requires the ADU development, excuse me. The ADU development is limited to 800 square feet. As well, there's a requirement that the ADUs within the development cannot exceed 50% of the floor area of the primary. So, to get to your question, yes, you could have those ADUs, but they would not be able to be greater than 50% of the primary. Does that make sense? And not on an individual basis, but a development-wide basis.
So, if I understand you correctly, there's a limit to 1,600 square feet on the primary. You could also have an 800-square-foot ADU. And you also may or may not have a, what did you say, 500-square-foot JADU?
That's right. You could have the 500-square-foot JADU. It would have to be contained within that 1,600-square-foot primary, which means that that primary then becomes 1,100 square feet.
So, so do you, in the example that you gave, in that picture, those garages are a separate structure. Are they included in the square footage? Or are they a different square footage because they are a separate structure?
So, if someone constructed ADUs above garages that were a separate structure, they would be first limited to the 800 square feet. But that would be the largest that any of those units could be. And then, we would look at the entire development proposal and add up what is the square footage of all the primary, the floor area square footage of all the primary dwellings? And what is the square footage of all the ADUs that are proposed? All the floor area of all of those? The total floor area of the ADU cannot exceed the total floor area, 50% of the total floor area of the primary. So, our intent is to, you know, make sure that the ADUs don't overwhelm, you know, the development. It's just a way to try to control the ADU development to make them actually accessible to our primary units and not become primary units in and of themselves in that approach.
But in that example that you gave of Cypress, there's 35 units. So, those 35 units could also have 35 ADUs.
Well, what he did in that particular site plan is he, when he added up all the units, he actually included, if I remember correctly, I thought he included the ADUs as dwellings. And I'd have to go back and take a peek at that.
Well, I counted structures and there were 35. And so, by right, because of our ADU and JADU ordinance, someone could also, by right, put in a separate ADU and by right, could also put in a JADU. And it's a little unclear whether or not, when you say it has to be part of the primary, whether those garages are considered part of the primary or not. See, what I'm kind of getting at is you could all of a sudden have three structures on a piece of property, or, let's see, more than that, three times four, 12 structures on something that today would have two plus... on something that today would have two plus two ADUs plus two JADUs. So six. So you went from six to 12.
So I just wanted to jump in, to just try to add a couple of points to this. And then I do want to circle back on the SEQA point. So just a couple of things. In that district, you're allowed currently two units per acre.
Correct.
Here, everybody, that's the base zoning. Then you could by right, as you're mentioning, you could build an additional two units as ADUs. That's your right. The JADU could only be built if it was carved out of your existing home. So if you had a detached garage, you could not convert that to a JADU.
So if the question that was given there, because those were detached garages, that was my question, those could not become JADUs?
That's correct. And to JP's point, we almost didn't include that in the packet because these are site plans that received no staff input. We just sent them the first draft of the ordinance and said, show us what you would do with this to try to give us some education on how it would be applied by folks who are in the development community. And then also have some examples of the concepts. But as we've now driven, you know, four meetings into this and very much refined it, those are pure conceptual that should not be seen as something that would ever be brought forward for action, especially not for approval, because they haven't received kind of the refinement that would go through what staff does iteratively with the design teams to make sure they meet all the other requirements. So just putting that aside for a minute.
Well, right, right. Except that if we approve this ordinance as is, that could be brought before because that is what is in the ordinance, correct?
Well, but no, well, no, that's the point I want to make. So there's a couple, there's a couple of things. So in this case, lot coverage still does limit the amount of area that could be developed. So as an example, an eight acre site in that zoning district, only 10% of that land area could be developed. So you're talking about less than an acre of eight acres being developed as a project, as a cottage project, requiring the remainder of that to be preserved. So that limitation in its own would force a little pocket of homes and then the rest of it to remain as open space because of the lot coverage limitation, including access roads, sidewalks, et cetera.
So does that in and of itself make doing this on RBL not, doesn't give you that bang for the buck if you can only do 10%, correct?
That's right.
Am I understanding that correctly?
So that's right. So you're definitely not gonna, like, you're not, I won't say definitely. You're not likely to get to a point where you actually can take advantage of doubling your density because all the other constraints that live in the ordinance would make it impossible to do so.
Okay.
Because of the roadways, the sidewalks, all the other features that it would take to actually get to all those structures.
Okay, because that's.
Not mention the structures themselves.
That's not clear when you look at that table?
Absolutely. Because we didn't put all the other land use kind of features that exist in the code in the table, and that's absolutely correct. So this is, this is just talking about the ordinance. And I think the RBL example is probably the most challenging because it's the most unique situation. But to your point, technically, someone right now who has a half acre in RBL and that is allowed to have one home, one ADU and one JADU, could in theory, that could be subdivided and you could now have two homes, two ADUs and two JADUs. So in effect, you could get six homes in a half acre, I'm sorry, in a one acre situation. So that's, I think the point is important to make.
So in that particular example that you have of the eight acres that was, that was out there in the example, what if that property owner split it into eight lots?
So if they subdivided it and then came in later and requested to do a cottage housing project with all of those eight lots. So the situation, when you propose a subdivision over, I think it's four lots, but JP might be able to correct me. You also have to show us the architecture for the homes that are going to go on those lots at the same time. The city of Kattati will not approve a subdivision over, and I can't remember the number. It's either, I think it's four, four lots without you also designing the homes to go on them. So in this case, someone would have to fully design a subdivision and then come back and then propose something different after all that was approved.
But if they sold off the lots, each one of those lot owners could come in as long as they, what I'm hearing you say, as long as they didn't cover more than 10%, they could still each have three units or.
That's correct. And that's, and that's correct today.
So that would probably be the way that that would go, but okay.
Yeah. So if someone, so to your point, if someone bought two of the lots and proposed a small cottage housing project, then they could kind of intensify a portion of those two lots.
Right.
Still subject to the 10% coverage. So they would have to, which is what we would want. They would have to cluster the development and then preserve everything around it. And which is what it's trying to do. Again, applying it to the RBL is probably the most kind of complex and probably tough to drill down into what it's really going to look like if someone were to try to propose one of these. But staff thought because we were preserving the rural residential and there are some larger parcels that may be able to take advantage of giving a few extra units, we thought we would include it. The planning commission was supportive. Obviously, if the city council doesn't think that's a good approach, no problem. And it makes sense, given the context that the council has with regards to the general plan update and some of the input that was provided at that point.
Yeah, people in this area were pretty adamant, as well as some of the other rural areas that, you know, that's what they like about is the small, you know, small rural area. But thank you for that. And thank you for the indulgence, madam, or mayor, Moore.
But I would like to touch on the SEQA because it is somewhat complex and it's probably somewhat unique to how Kattati is used to seeing SEQA applied. But so the general plan, environmental impact report analyzed the potential for all of the residential land in Kattati to be developed at an assumed rate of development that would occur. So not the very maximum allowable, but something that's likely to occur on every parcel in town. So that resulted in an impact of over 1,000 units being built over the life of that general plan, right? Because it assumed, if everything builds around the midpoint over this lifetime, you're going to get, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there's a pretty robust discussion in the staff report. And it's some, some thousand plus units that will be built in Kattati over the lifetime of this. And it analyzed the impacts of that, the traffic, water, sewer, all of those things. However, Kattati has a growth management ordinance that only allows 100 units per year to be built. And we have to monitor that construction and make make sure that we are able to serve those units as they're built over the life of that general plan. This ordinance, while it does, to your point, it does allow individual parcels to come in requesting to double the density that's allowed in their base zone, it's still, from the staff's perspective, fits in the impact analysis that was done for the broader EIR because under this ordinance, any individual project that comes forward proposing to do that is subject to its own environmental impact analysis and use permit, allowing the city to say, okay, you might want to overall double your density, but we are going to limit you for, you're going to bring it down to, maybe you get another one-third over your density because it doesn't make sense given the impacts of your project or the site-specific elements of your project, et cetera. So this ordinance, while it's creating a tool, staff finds that the creation of that tool lives within the impact analysis that was done for the EIR, knowing that a future project will get its own specific impact analysis for how that project may create impacts not anticipated with the ability to build those additional units. I don't know if that makes sense, but happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Let's, let's mayor Lyman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Yeah, actually, I had about three specific questions and two more general ones. But I'm actually going to start with the general ones first, I think, because one of them backs up to what council member Harvey brought up. And I share her concerns about the impacts of, as this is currently proposed in the RBL to some degree. In general, looking at the neighborhoods, living here for over 30 years, I see little difference between many of the rural residential and rural very low neighborhoods. When I look at our zoning map, which I pulled up, and I look at how we do our zoning based on distance from the city center, I see much of the RBL is roughly the same distance as a lot of the rural residential is, yet it's zoned lesser. So that exists. But with that, then anything we do in there, we should certainly have some enhanced sensitivity, I believe, to protecting that expectation, regardless of where the state is indeed pushing us. I'm glad that you made clear that that one drawing for Cypress would be found to be very problematic because I looked at that and I'd have to say that was nothing like what I expected out of a cottage development. I expected to see small village-like structures, not larger, with a large central green area like some of these many charming pictures. And I certainly didn't see that. As a matter of fact, I counted 64 units, I guess, listed there. So now Logan Place next to it, roughly, just eyeballing at half the acreage, has seven units. Now, if we were to give this same rough acreage, that would be 14 units. Then going farther from the city center, we would hit something like this with maybe up to 64 units. And then the next property over, looking at our zoning map, is rural residential with one per acre. That's not the feathering that we've always agreed we do here. So I do think we need to look at that. I'm personally not convinced, at least at this point, I'm open to discussion and hearing the public and from staff certainly, but I'm not convinced that RBL should be included in this. But I think at minimum at least, we should have, see this come back with a discussion of that or rethinking the density bonus perhaps in that area to slightly less than 2X. So that's one general thing. The other general thing, I think Noah answered for me a little bit. Noah, you can speak to it if you'd like, but you mentioned being able to use the use permit to have some control. And that was really a concern of mine. If we okay this ordinance tonight to come back, if we introduce it and then bring it back and accept it, what control do we really have over final design? And this is important to me because as I look at many of the plans we've foregone, some look pretty good, it's nice infill projects that do seem to capture some of that. I think they'd make nice neighborhoods and do the job. It would be something that would help with some housing availability and also still be very Kattati-like. I like it. But a lot of the others didn't really do that, not just Cypress. And it struck me that despite our rules, we can never guarantee we're going to get a good project. So will the use permit truly allow the planning commission and council yea and nay in control over this? Or are we making this by right? And I ask because we've been down this road before with things where we were supposed to have a little more say over the final product, but later we didn't. So if you could give me a definitive answer on that, that would be helpful. And I'll stop here before I get to my more specific questions and let you speak, whoever would like to speak to that.
I'll take a crack at it and then ask JP to back me up. But one of the things that I think JP was, or senior planner Harry, as I apologize, was very cognizant of when he wrote this, is not only is a use permit approval required, but also a council or commission-approved development plan. So both of those things are required. And while a development plan is not an entitlement, what that gives the planning commission approval of if it was not a subdivision, so more just a kind of a rental project, or the council ultimately, if it was a subdivision, is, it's almost, I'm going to use, I'm going to describe it as a security blanket to allow the council or the planning commission to have the say over how the site is actually developed. So it'll look like a typical site plan that you would see coming in, whether it was an actual subdivision or even a rental project that was just detached units or even road homes. But the actual site plan itself has to receive council or commission approval. And that would allow you, in addition to the use permit, the ability to kind of massage those designs in a way that would address potential impacts related to fitting it into the overall context. And so one example, and I'll stick to the Cypress Avenue one, would be if the project was able to come before the commission or the council the way it was designed, you all could say, look, there's no way that fits into that context. You need to completely revise that design to come, put all the development into one concentrated area and preserve everything else as maybe open space, agricultural land, whatever you would say, because you have approval over both the use element to, should we give you this use on the site, and also the site plan itself. And I think JP was very thoughtful in giving that tool to the decision-making bodies to kind of go part and parcel with it. And JP, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't think so. I mean.
Well, that's helpful to hear, JP. I certainly appreciate that. I know you've worked a long time with this and I think that is important. I still don't know if I'm 100% sold at this point on that level of density in the RBL area. But hearing that we'll have, this is about as clear as declaration as I could expect publicly that we're going to have some final say and some ability, if we're unhappy with the plan, to change that plan. I think that's important. So with that, let me get just a few specific questions for either JP or Noah. Whoever wants to answer, feel free to jump in. Apologies, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to get through this. But this was a pretty important and long piece and it brought out a lot of questions. And this is something I've discussed with some people planning before, just in general, actually of late. I wanted to ask, I see a requirement, a very forward-thinking concept at least, for permeable materials wherever possible, concrete and asphalt. And that's, of course, to reduce runoff and increase recharge, both things I think are very important. What I wanted to ask, just a staff input on, is what would be more cost-effective, but also, just as importantly, get better long-term recharge? Would it be using permeable materials for these surfaces? Or would it be using what we see more now, these modern, much larger, very greenly planted recharge areas, runoff and recharge areas? And I asked that. Because for this sort of project, where you have these large green areas and walking paths, having something like that would make sense. And as I see it, and as I see it's called out, not being a part of the open space calculation, but actually in addition, that might give us a slightly larger area of green and openness that fits well with this cottage thing and also perhaps work better long-term. So you understand that like any filter, permeable materials lose their effectiveness over time, whereas we don't really have that nature of problem with the typical recharge areas we use now in all places, subdivisions, parking lots. So what would be, is this worth looking at? Would the savings from using more traditional surfaces and the few hard areas we have there allow us to be a little more excessive in our use of green areas and use them for recharge?
Let me touch on that if I can, Mr. Mayor.
Don't rush him, Vice Mayor.
Certainly.
Don't make the mayor happy.
So a couple, there's a couple of ideas in your comment. One, first of all, one, you do need to have hard surface pathways for people to walk on. I mean, you know, not everybody always wants to walk on grass all the time. So that's what's envisioned there. But on the same idea that you expressed about making these green areas, we did try to work that in, in a different kind of way with EVA access. So there are certain areas where we do it all the time with developments. We put in a road simply for emergency vehicle to get to a, to get to a certain part of the property. And this ordinance says, you know, if the fire marshal will approve it, use an alternative surface that allows for vegetation, vegetative growth, like what you're talking about. So we, we totally aware of what you're saying. We approached it with the EVA access because we figured that would be an area where instead of road, we could have grass, for example, you know. And there were, there are some places like over at the Green Music Center that utilizes that idea perfectly. But we don't, but we do want to have pathways that people are comfortable walking on, pushing a stroller on, you know, that kind of thing.
Certainly. Good. Good. Okay, well, it appears that's been looked at, but I did want to raise it, because it wasn't clear to me from the packet. So moving on to the next, we discussed clustering on packet page 111, and in brief just mentioned the requirement would be a minimum of four and up to a maximum of twenty-four units. And I want to ask how we arrived at that, and why isn't it lowered? Because I'll just be frank and say it strikes me as really, really high, and gets away from that whole cottage field. Most of the very charming pictures we seen are anywhere from eleven to fifteen units. This is getting upwards of roughly double, maybe almost, in some circumstances? Any reason we can't lower that?
No, there isn't a reason. I mean, as a matter of fact, kind of the literature that goes out there usually promotes limiting it to twelve. The reason we decided to go with a larger number is actually because we've been working with that developer out at 8841 Old Redwood Highway. And when we looked at what it would take to break up the property into these smaller units, we were creating these artificial roadways going through the property to basically create those smaller pockets. And we felt like with good site planning, you can accommodate a larger number of homes on a larger piece of property. That 8841, I believe, is a seven-acre property. So that was the reason. We approached it from a practicality standpoint for developing larger parcels. And then, but the literature does promote a twelve-unit maximum, and that's what you often see with the cottage housing.
Okay, well, I'm interested in hearing what the public says, and my colleagues. I think I'd like to see that reduced. Simply, when I look at some of the drawings, it's the ones that are clustered smaller, I can see them. Even without huge green spaces, you look at Charles Street Village, it works. With a larger massing, the more straightforward rows of structures, you start looking just like another apartment building or set of condos or something, which I know is the goal to try, to do something a little different, to get a little of the best of both if we can. Let's see. Okay. On page fifty-eight, we talk about the solar. I like that we have enough solar in each building for 50% of the demand. I'm concerned that for the parking spaces, only half of them will have EV charging. Now, I know that the other half will have the infrastructure in place, the conduit to do this, but after having spent some years of many times being told, something doesn't pencil out, it could never be done in a development this size. My colleagues will remember some, we've gone through this together, and agreeing, even though I thought a higher number of solar units would be better, and only you see two months later, another city with a comparable-sized development have everything be solar. I kind of feel tonight, I'd like to see us require the EV parking, the chargers, and for every parking spot. And I say that because the cost of that solar on the roof is going to be factored into what people are paying for these homes. They're already paying for the solar, but yet if they don't have, if they wind up with a space that doesn't have charging, they're going to lose one of the key benefits, which is using, being able to charge that vehicle, you know, in the off-hours and use their power for that. So for my first take, I'm open to hearing why that might be totally impossible, but I'd be much more comfortable to see that, even if it raised final costs a bit. And last one, parking. When I heard the discussion of the potential lack of ability to require ADU units to actually have a space, that began to raise my concerns. We've done this dance before in Cattati, I'm thinking of one of our larger neighborhoods, and I'm seeing smiles, yes, over by the Smart Station. It's a beautiful development, it was well-done, but in all ways, perhaps one failure that the city, the Fire District, the developer all shared some responsibility for, an understandable mistake, is that there's a shortage of parking. And it has been a huge problem for the people that live there for years and years and years, something we're still trying to rectify when we hopefully are able to develop other areas in that neighborhood. I'm wondering if we need to rethink that. If we are not going to be able to reliably use an ADU space, then do we need to increase to three per space just to make sure? Because otherwise, we're setting up another parking problem in these neighborhoods, and I really don't want to do that. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, because that would be my direction. If we're not going to have ADUs, then we need to factor that in, I think.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, you may.
First, on the EV charging, there's no reason why couldn't, if the council would like it to be 100%, why can't be 100%? You know, it's not required at all now. So we felt like it was kind of a leap to say, hey, if you're going to do this type of development, you're going to definitely put in 50% of the chargers. I mean, we do have CalGreen, which requires infrastructure, but not actual chargers. So, you know, we felt we were making a leap, we can of course make a bigger leap, if that's...
Well, I don't want to use the term great leap forward, because I think that's been used, and it wasn't that successful. But I appreciate staff's leap in this, and I'd like to encourage, since I'm not hearing a lot, you know, if my colleagues agree, I think we should finish the jump and go all the way on that. So those are the questions I had for now, they're answered. Thank you.
You have one other item I was going to touch on. And I lost my notes here.
Well, there was some general concern about density in the RBL...
Yeah, I got that, no, that was the last thing you said, and I apologize.
That's okay. I said it, and I'm having a hard time, but I believe it was about the charging, that was the last thing we covered. And I think you did speak to that pretty clearly, for me at least.
If I may, I think it was the number of parking spaces per unit.
Oh, right. Thank you, thank you. So, you know, as planners, and what we're usually, our bigger concern is that we overpark things. I am fully aware of what's happening over at, near the train station there, which is actually why we don't allow ADU development in that particular area on that street, in response to the parking situation and the traffic hazard that it causes. If, the two per space, I mean, I guess if I had my way, I'd actually go less, but the two per space is consistent with all of our residential, it's basically the same parking requirement that any residential unit would have in the entire city. So we're not changing anything with respect to parking limitations. There is a recognition that the ADU may drive up parking. But I think the trend going forward is to park less. And so I'm resistant to increasing parking beyond the standard that we already have, and that's the standard we're using in here.
I think our standard is good, I like it, it's just that, and this is, of course, it's not staff's fault, or council, or the city's fault, it's the state doing its work. But pushing for the ADUs and ADUs and them being pulled into this process, and with, if it wasn't for the impact of losing a parking space, that would be fine. But we don't really now have two per space, we don't have that, because those are going to be eaten up. And we can say, and I understand the logic, and I support the need for less vehicle traffic and all that, at the same time, I recognize that's not happening for a while. We may be driving different type of vehicles and fueling them different ways, but people are going to need places to park, and having seen that mistake happen once, I'm very hesitant to do it again. Is there any middle ground that comes to mind to staff that might help take care of that issue with the ADUs?
One of the ways we approached it in the ordinance, so that we, is that unlike anywhere else in the city, you can't count street parking to meeting your parking requirements. So we actually tried to promote additional parking, I don't know if it actually would help it, or actually make it less, but one of the things we allow in this ordinance is for them to use the street for parking. And that was in an idea that they would maybe able to, you know, provide that additional parking without creating structures for parking, without creating larger lots for parking. I don't know how it would play out until we actually start seeing some projects come forward, though, you know?
I would just love to see something that we can add into this tonight, or if it comes back before we finalize it, that clarifies that a little more, because otherwise, I hate to leave the legacy of a lot of nice little mini neighborhoods, hopefully in areas that aren't rural, that have parking problems, that in every other way are perfect, but everybody's unhappy because parking's a nightmare every single day and evening for them. Regardless of it's their own faults, they fill their garages up. We know what people will do, we have to build around that. We can try to leave, but at the same time, we also have to listen. So I'd be open to hear something of that after we have a chance, if anything comes to mind during public comment. Thank you for your time, thank you for your patience, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. Councilmember Sparks.
You're muted.
Thank you, sorry about that. Like all of you, I have a list of things I'll try to go through as quickly as possible. First of all, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to the staff and the planning commission. I'm just so excited about this ordinance coming through, I think it's such a wonderful thing. I am thrilled with the opportunity that we have here to create a little bit more density and infill sites where it makes sense, and help us get towards that, those RENA targets that we need to meet, and I think this is a great way to do it, and I'm just so thrilled. So with that, the first couple of things on my list are, actually, I just wanted to address some of the things that other councilmembers brought forward. I agree with Councilmember Lemon that the number twenty-four seemed pretty high to me, and just looking at the sample, the sample ideas that we got when you sent out the ordinance to developers and asked them, you know, what do you make of this, what would you design? They're sort of automatically jumping to these really big projects with all houses in lines, and it's not looking the way we really want it to, and I think that's because that number twenty-four is on there. So my question is, if we were to limit it to twelve or sixteen or something closer to the sort of standard recommendations, would there be a way, I know there was a provision at the end of the ordinance saying that there could be exceptions made to some of the rules in the ordinance on a case-by-case basis, would there be a way to grant some sort of exception to, say, the property that's trying to develop on Redwood Highway that you mentioned, to do more units? So that was one question, because I'm sensitive to wanting to allow something more creative to happen in that space than just single-family homes. But I also think that by having the number twenty-four on there, it's leading developers who see that ordinance in the wrong direction mentally, like they're not really visualizing what we would like them to visualize. Should I just go through my whole list, or should I give time to respond in between?
Go ahead and go through it, Councilmember Sparks, and then we can come back.
Okay, so that was one. Councilmember Lemon's other suggestion about 100% electric vehicle charging, at first I really liked that suggestion, and I'm really passionate about trying to build up our infrastructure, because I think we're going to be switching really quickly to electric vehicles in the next decade. I do think that right now, it would be a little bit overkill. I envision that a lot of those chargers right now would go unused for a while, and I think the worst possible outcome of this ordinance is that there's too many little restrictions, this is just one little thing, but too many things that each one of them increases the cost just a little bit, and then projects don't pencil, and developers don't end up taking advantage of the ordinance and actually building developments. So I would, I'd be open to 100%, but I'd kind of lean towards doing 50% to start with, as long as that infrastructure's there, just because it's a small expense, but it's just one more thing that adds on to the expense, and I don't think it would be used right away, although it would start to be used more in the coming years. Okay, I wanted to talk about the parking. I'm very sensitive to the situation that the city has had in the past with parking disasters, and I don't want to cause any new ones. However, I think we're using a sort of one-size-fits-all approach to parking, and the two spaces seems to me a little excessive for some of the smaller developments that we could imagine. Like, we're kind of thinking about these big projects that are similar to planned unit developments we've had in the past, but the ordinance is also meant to accommodate small developments with, say, four units, maybe a single fourplex on a small property. And based on the current requirement, let's say somebody was going to come in and build, like the current requirement in this ordinance, if somebody was going to come in and build four little tiny units of 700 square feet each, and that was going to be it for the whole project, that would mean nine parking spaces, which seems a little bit excessive to me, given that they might be intended for single residents, a lot more people are living like one person in a residence. So I, I'm not, I understand that we've had problems in the past, but I think we could take a more nuanced approach that would address those issues for larger developments and units that were larger square feet, but also perhaps have a smaller parking requirement for really small units. Another item on my list was the minimum unit size. As I was reading through cottage housing ordinances that many other communities have put forth, it was really, and I'd love to be corrected if I'm wrong, because I know my sampling, I didn't look at a thousand different things, I only looked at about half a dozen, but none of them that I looked at had a minimum size. So I'm sort of curious why we have that 700-square-foot size, because it seems like it would be interesting to allow the possibility for slightly smaller units, like a 500-square-foot studio cottage, like a true little, cute little cottage. So that was a question, is why do we have the 700-square-foot minimum? And then, two more things. One, the common open space requirement of 500 square feet per unit, I think it's great to have that, I'm wondering if 500 is the exact right number, and I'm wondering exactly where that number came from. Because, again, the worst possible outcome we could have is we go through all this work to build this wonderful ordinance, but then projects don't pencil out, and they don't end up getting, nothing ends up getting built. And so is there room to maybe reduce that total square foot requirement a little bit? Because it did seem a lot larger than what I was seeing for other ordinances, I was seeing 200, 250, and then we're at 500, so I was just like, whoa, where did 500 come from? And then, you know, another note with that is, there was the possibility of reducing the total amount of separation between detached units, that the ordinance allows for reducing that from eight feet to six feet, if the extra feet, square feet are put into common space. I feel like with the common space requirement, common open space requirement of 500, that's pretty good already, and would it just make more flexibility and maybe cause some more projects that are on the borderline to be able to pencil, if we could just remove that requirement, just reduce it to six feet and not have to add that into the existing common open space? And so I'm just sort of curious, I guess my question is, is there reasoning that I'm missing behind some of these factors, and could we consider some of those changes? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, did you want to address any of those, or?
Sure. So your first suggestion about, first of all, limiting the unit count number to twelve units, and then utilizing the provision that allows for flexibility within the design, I think is actually a good one, and I think that also goes to Councilman Vice Mayor Lemon's concern as well. And I think we could probably use that to deal with the, you know, the parking issue as well, that you mentioned. So if, for example, we had the four-unit project like you had, and they came in and only were proposing eight or six, and we felt it was a workable solution, that might be, yeah, that's something that the ordinance wouldn't prevent a project sponsor from proposing that, and it would be within... And it would be within the discretion of the planning commission or city council to approve that. It would allow for that kind of thing, and I think that's a good way to approach some of those more risk, or, you know, just kind of... You know, some of the numbers are somewhat arbitrary, is it 12, is it 14? You just have to pick something at some point. And that's why we also built in the flexibility component. So that might be the solution, and I think that was a good suggestion. EV chargers, you know, I'm open to whatever the council wants to say, but I think, Ms. Sparks, that you brought up a very good point, and that is something that we're aware of. That, you know, it's always nice to have a long wish list of everything you want every development to have, but at the end of the day, someone has to build that project, and someone has to finance that project. And it's not getting easier. And so, yeah, while we try to throw things at it that we want to do, we try not to go overboard in making too many demands on developers, that just adds up to make it a project that never gets built. So we are always trying to find that middle ground, which I think is why we just said half.
JP, I wanted to chime in on that. I'm remembering Ms. Sparks's comments jogged my memory. I think it was the second public workshop we had with the planning commission. The commission was similarly interested in requiring 100% EV charging, or maybe increasing it. And Paul Fritz from Fritz Architecture Urbanism in Sabathas School, who is one of our architects that provided some of the site plan work, he was, he's, you know, a very thoughtful architect who actually does a lot of private development work. And he pointed out that if the city were to require that, the developer would be required to upgrade the PG&E infrastructure from wherever the substation is all the way to the site to make sure that those chargers, whether they're ever used or not, when they're installed, all the infrastructure can serve those chargers, assuming that they're all being used at the same time. And so the infrastructure costs were significant. And so the compromise came with the commission that, okay, well, if we require half, and then the other half can be kind of piecemeal connected as the demand is there, then the folks who want those or need those chargers, when the development's done, would have those on the menu of available kind of upgrades, so to speak, they could get to their unit. And then down the road, if somebody were able to purchase an EV, then the infrastructure's there for them to install the wiring to make it happen. So I did just want to chime in, because I recall that. And it was a pretty thoughtful discussion that the commission had with someone who works in the industry and is responsible for getting these things accomplished.
Yeah, thanks, though. I had forgotten that we had that discussion. Then you also brought why the minimum unit size. Some ordinances do have the minimum unit size. I think originally, we probably pulled it from that. At the same time, we included the minimum unit size because of the recognition that there would be ADU development. And we're trying to have the primary units be the primary units. And so there's no hardcore reason why you need to have a minimum unit size. It was just that we wanted the development to have some form to it where you really could, you know, the cottages were good cottages. And as well, the ADU requirement that they not exceed 50% of the floor area. It was that kind of thinking. There's no magic reason behind the 700-square-foot minimum. And we could certainly either eliminate it or reduce it even further. Is 500 square feet the right metric for common area? Again, it's just, it was something we landed on through looking at various different ordinances and looking, you know, through the conversations that we had with developers and designers. It didn't seem to be onerous, no more so than the land coverage limitations that we're running into. In fact, it was the land coverage limitations that really seemed to be the most important of the living factors or the constraints on the development, and that's what we were getting feedback on. So, you know, we didn't choose to lower it any lower than it was, since it didn't seem to be causing a problem having it at the 500 plus the 400 private, so 900 square feet per unit. But that's just it, you know, 500 is a round number. There's no, again, no real magic behind that. It just didn't seem to be a constraint, but it was definitely something that we wanted to make sure was a component of the project. So that's why we have that number. And reduce the building separation? Yeah, I don't see, I don't think we want to go less than six feet. There are some fire protection reasons why we want to maintain separation. But, you know, six feet, I think that works just as fine as eight. We started out with, at 10, and over time, it's gotten smaller. So there's no reason why we can't go to six. I think I'd run, I'd like to run it past the building official, but I think that that's not going to be a problem. I think anything, we would get to five or below, we would probably start running into a problem with building apartment. So to me, six is feasible, as feasible as eight. I think also, but, you know, the eight gives you that space, and you do want space and air and light to move between buildings, so you don't always want to go too tight. And I think those were your comments. Was there something that I might have missed?
No, I, no, you hit everything. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Just a follow-up about the size of the, the minimum size of the unit. You'd said something about we wanted to make sure the cottage unit was the unit, and the ADU wasn't sort of bigger than the cottage. If the ADU was bigger than the unit, would the ADU just become the main unit, and then the other one would be the ADU?
Well, I mean, I guess that's, this is probably one way you can look at it. Then they would, you know, it's going to be interesting to go through the first few projects that this is, because I think, you know, that's a good point. But then it... I don't know, it's just kind of, you're just kind of playing a show game at that point, really. You know, you're still building the larger private.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, if that's a concern that's preventing us from having a smaller unit size, then maybe we could, could we simply add in a line saying that ADUs have to be smaller, each individual ADU has to be smaller than the main unit it's associated with? Just...
Yeah, we could modify it so it reads something like that.
I'd hate to have this sort of ADU issue prevent us from building small units at all, when there might be projects that don't want to have ADUs.
There's other concerns. We can't limit an ADU less than 800 square feet. So that's why, within the development, we don't look at each individual ADU compared to the primary, but actually the ADU square area, floor area, compared to the entire development.
Okay.
State law doesn't allow for a restriction that would prevent an 800-square-foot or less, so.
JP and Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one point to the ADU discussion. So just as an example, Kessing, under construction now, expected to be completed towards the end of the summer, 43 homes approved with four ADUs, so about 10% of the homes had ADUs. Only two of those have been built and are going to be built under the building permits that have been pulled right now. So only 5% of 40 homes are actually moving forward with ADU construction at the initial phase of the development. So just to point that factor out. Not to say things won't change in the future, or different projects are going to have different characteristics, but it gives a little bit of baseline information.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions, Councilmember Sparks?
Yes, thank you very much for the time.
Certainly. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. I'm trying to save most of my comments for after public comment when we have a discussion. So I'm trying to keep this to questions. I have a bit of concern, I will say, that we relitigate the entire planning commission process. So my first question is, can you, either Norah or JP, describe the noticing for the public workshops and the planning commission process that happened for this? Because there are going to be people who discover this ordinance only when it reaches city council. And so I just need to know as a councilmember how to answer them about what sort of noticing there was for that pretty extensive public process that already happened.
We, with ordinances that are pretty much our city-wide, the approach we took, as typical, is newspaper ordinance or newspaper noticing and public posting in public areas. We did not do mailings, because in this case, we would have been mailing to the entire city. But that was the noticing that went out. Because it was ordinances that we were talking about, it was generally 10 days prior to the hearing. But it took the form of posting in public areas and newspaper ads.
Okay, I trust it was on the front page of the city website at times, and things like that, the events?
I don't know. I actually don't know if it was on the city webpage or not.
I would like to add, Councilmember Ford, starting in October 2019, we held a housing workshop to start to talk about all of these issues, saying, "We're going to be doing this work." We did this housing survey, which we got over 125 responses to. That was general, but also shows up, there's a link, a housing page on the community development website, where people can fill out a form to express interest in housing issues, and we'll use that to notify people. We've talked about this very, very, I would say, thoroughly, but to your point, you likely will hear someone have that perspective. But we have done everything we can to notice this, but I will acknowledge between fires, PSS, and the current pandemic, I think a lot of that does get lost in the noise a little bit.
Yeah, thanks. And the second question is, what do we get through this ordinance that we wouldn't get by just bringing back PUDs?
Well, I would say probably the most unique thing about the ordinance is it allows for the density increase on a particular parcel. The PUD, well, you know, allows you to move from different standards. It wouldn't allow you to do something like that. That's probably the largest difference. You know, unless they actually had a density bonus that was included in their affordability. The other thing is that's different is PUD, what this is, what this ordinance is, is it has fairly rigid design standards that people are required to follow. PUDs are the opposite. They're basically a way for a developer to say, you know, "Here's what I want to do," instead of following the standards. So this is more form-based in driving projects in a particular form. If you brought back a PUD, getting back to Mr. Lemon's concern, then we really have, you know, it's completely unpredictable of what nature the project would look like, because anybody can propose a PUD that deviates from all kinds of standards. As well, my experience is, as developers, they view PUDs as a double-edged sword, because that also means that planners usually spend a lot of time, you know, holding up their project, you know, working through every little nuance, and it's completely unpredictable for them, you know, going in, what the outcome's going to be. So they don't like the meddling of planners, and planners don't like the meddling with all the rules. So that's the big difference between PUDs.
And I would just add, we're doing the rezoning work ahead of, so this is a rezoning effort essentially, and then that gets used with the use permit, whereas a PUD is a rezoning, which is just another level. And we talked about, should we require a cottage housing project to propose a rezoning to a cottage housing overlay? And one of the things we came away from is, no, we'll go the use permit route, because a rezoning is kind of a more scary thing for a project, because it does level up the kind of the legal requirements. And so we're trying to do some of that heavy lifting now to hopefully facilitate some of these projects.
Yeah, that's true. Right?
Great. All right. Thanks very much. I'll save my opinions till the discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford? Well, so many of the topics have already been discussed, and I do want to open it up for public comment, but I do have a couple of quick questions. 8841 Old Red, what is that zone?
NL, so neighborhood low density. Its zoning is identical to what you see on Clovey or Lane, and identical to L section.
Residential, very low density?
No, it's neighborhood low density is what we call it.
Okay.
NL.
So there's a couple of comments that you made in the presentation, and I think Mr. House also referenced it. You said, in these proposed ordinance, we would not allow this in RR, but we would allow it in the RVL. When you say "we," who are you referring to?
Well, I would say, when I say "we" like that, it was, I think, perhaps Noah, mostly myself, and then talking, I would know about where it would be. And, you know, the ordinance proposes to only allow it in certain zoning districts. So when I did say "we," I would be saying those of us that crafted the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you on those. And then the only other comment I have on that is, I am a proponent of going 100% solar and charging stations at all of the locations, because if these are truly homes that people will be in for years, it will never be less expensive to include that in there. And it's an incentive, it's there, it's used. We're going to be going much more in the electrical realm these days, so. Those are my thoughts on that. And with that, I will go ahead and open up for public comment. Ms. Burgess, if you would be so kind?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Pat Gilardi, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. My name's Pat Gilardi. I live at 45 Nelson Lane, which is a private street off of Cypress. I bet you know what I want to talk about. RVL is rural, very low density. And I happen to live right next to one of those properties, but I'm zoned RR, which is rural residential. As a rural residential property owner, I can grow crops, I can have stinky animals, I can have all kinds of things that are not compatible with neighborhoods. And let me back up just a little bit. You know, I heard you all say that the Cypress example probably isn't viable. Then it shouldn't have been in your packet, quite frankly, because that's the one that got me all upset. And I know all you people, so you haven't heard from me in over eight years, so you know I'm upset. Next to me is 11 acres of RVL. Imagine how many homes could go on those 11 acres if a developer purchased that. And I don't think they're just going to do one. They're going to subdivide it and do whatever it is that they do. Through the last general plan of the development of the Form-Based code, RR, people like me, were promised that development would be feathered up to RR. This doesn't feel to me like feathering. I noticed in the presentation that you stated an objective is to maintain the character of existing residential neighborhoods. Placing a cottage overlay up against RR is hardly maintaining the characteristic of our rural neighborhood. Just as a reminder, we have narrow streets that people go way too fast on, and hardly any sidewalks. This is truly rural. You state compatibility will be addressed through design, but again, development is by right. And this density, overall density, contradicts with the rural character, in my opinion. You also stated in the presentation that it's fostering a strong sense of community between neighbors. Well, maybe in their neighborhood, but when they don't like my... Well, maybe in their neighborhood, but when they don't like my sheep that have been separated from their moms screaming at two A M., I do not believe we will be fostering community. Parking, again, using the Cypress example of parking, if you underpark one of those developments on Cypress, again, narrow street, no sidewalks, I don't know where they're going to go. So I'm going to close with by right. Your hands are tied to a certain extent when you're presented with a development. I think you provide a goldmine for developers. And I think that council oversight, love you guys, but it's a kiss and a promise. When you're gone, someone else is not going to remember tonight. And I don't want to be the example of what rural residential used to be. And so that R R was excluded is offensive. Other than I love you guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Moore, that will, Marissa Gilardi, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Marissa Gilardi. I have lived on my family's farm on Nelson Lane my entire life. I have raised many four H livestock projects here with my family and have continued to do so through my college years and hopefully the rest of my life. I am speaking in defense of the safety of my livestock and quality of life in my neighborhood. I feel that this is a huge threat to my animal's safety because I already have people trespassing on my property and am terrified of the possibility of someone physically harming or feeding my animals toxic plants or food meant for human consumption. I am also liable if someone gets hurt trying to get in with my animals on my property. By increasing the population of people in our neighborhood, who are also going to increase the population of dogs, dogs that are not trained to be around livestock are a huge threat to my animals' lives. You can put signs and gates and fences up like they already have, but people already do and will continue to ignore them. I've had people threaten me on my own property, telling me that it's their right to be on my land. I've had people walk up my private road to film me with my goats and sheep. I've had people call the police on us while we are assisting a view during lambing season, saying that it is abuse. Normal, everyday people do not understand livestock agriculture. It is my right to have my animals here, and I or my neighbors do not need to be constantly bothered by people who do not like what they see, hear, or smell. Theft of livestock, especially with babies, is also a huge problem. I should not have to install cameras or confine my animals animals to small spaces if I feel that it is unsafe for them to be out in their pastures. I enjoy spending time outside with my animals and in my family's large vegetable and fruit gardens. This will disturb my animals' peace and possibly lower their quality of life. You will absolutely ruin our neighborhood's quaint country character and the peaceful privacy that I, my family, my neighbors, and animals all love and enjoy so much. I would also like to mention that you will destroy the wildlife population. We have a beautiful family of deer that lives in the field of eleven acres next to us. We have foxes, coyotes, fog packs, and mountain lions. We have learned to live with them in peace, but you will be taking away their habitat. That is all.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Moore, that does end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. I'm going to bring it back to the council and then kind of get a consensus where we might want to go in this direction. Mr. Harris, do you have a list of of items that the council members have brought up and we would like to have readdressed in a short, concise format? You are muted.
Sorry. I think I do have a fairly complete list. Do you want me to run down it and then we could add to it?
I would, I would, and I know Councilmember Ford has some more comments and or questions on there. Am I correct, Mr. Ford?
Right, as I told you, I was holding comments till the discussion.
Well, you know, we gave you an opportunity and you didn't take it, so.
I'll take it now.
Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, sure. So with Councilmember Sparks, I'm concerned about the minimum unit size recommendation. It feels like this ordinance evolved from a cottage housing ordinance, meaning pocket neighborhood, very sort of clear vision, to an attempt to write an ordinance that would cover a lot more things, including, as you point out, you know, fourplexes, and and you expanded it at the last step to the neighborhood urban zoning, which which is not going to have front porches and four hundred square feet of private outdoor space on a fifteen unit per acre zone block. In other words, on a thirty unit per acre block. So I feel like there's some issues here where the the final version doesn't match. Sort of still has vestiges of the original vision, but was but is attempting to expand to a much different and broader class of of projects. I would rather have an ordinance that is less restrictive and applicable to a broader class of projects than the original narrow pocket neighborhoods vision, which would then leave us still without a way to address, for instance, how to build a bunch of smaller studios downtown, which I think we need, for instance. So I I would like to see the ordinance actually encompass that. It currently doesn't, for instance, because four hundred square foot private outdoor space per unit doesn't work for a second floor unit unless you build big old decks out on over Old Redwood Highway or wherever they're going to go. The so the minimum unit size concerns me because it's tied to that classic cottage with an A D U vision, doesn't allow, for instance, for a development of twelve tiny homes, which I would like this ordinance to to allow in inappropriate space, like the county's cottage housing ordinance does and was in fact designed to allow. So I don't want I don't want the whole ordinance to be driven by an assumption that every primary gets a gets an accessory and therefore driving the primary bigger. So then to the maximum unit size, fifteen hundred square feet is only a small house by the standards of the last ten years. It is not a small house by any historical measure or by the measure of of housing that exists in Sonoma County. If you look up prices for a three bedroom, fifteen hundred square foot house in Sonoma County, they are not the missing middle. They are the seven hundred thousand square, uh, seven hundred thousand dollar houses that that people are struggling to find a way to buy. So if we create an ordinance that allows people to build fifteen, well, you you updated the last, between the last planning commission and now, to sixteen hundred square feet, we we allow people to build double the double the density of sixteen hundred square foot houses, that's not what I would call cottage development. That's that's, you know, Montgomery Village, but six feet apart instead of twenty feet apart. And I so so I'm I'm really concerned about both the too high lower size limit and too high upper size limit. And I wonder if there's not a way to write the limit in terms of the average unit size or the total square footage in living space on the property rather than simply a number of units. Because if you allow the fifteen hundred square feet and it fits within the the lot coverage, that's what's going to get built and they'll all be out of reach. They're not going to be middle third housing, except for the A D Us and J J Us. So I'm concerned about that. A couple other issues, E V park, E V charging. I've I've, my family has had electric cars exclusively for five years and half the spaces is more than enough. Modern electric cars have ranges over two hundred miles and nobody charges every night. And that is plenty of charging capacity. It it requires that that the outfit work out a way to share chargers, which is perfectly doable and completely within modern technology. If you put in, if you force developers to put in E V chargers for every space, most of them will not see use before they're obsolete. And that is a really horrible use of of anybody's money and technology. I mentioned challenges in the N U zone. I don't see how this is going to work in the N U zone as it's currently written, but I would really like it to, like, so I think we need four hundred square foot studios for single people. That's plenty of space for a single person in a relatively urban environment like downtown. So I don't want to insist on seven hundred square feet and and some of the other vestiges of the cottage piece are problematic there. Same with the private outdoor space. I think I will stop. Oh, also, I'm parking. If if we can allow some studios, one parking space is fine. So I would like to see a some kind of tiered requirement based on size of unit that that it just doesn't make sense to require the same number of parking spaces for a four hundred square foot unit as for a thirty-five hundred square foot house. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for your comments, Ben. You hit on some of the things I was interested in. Parking, I agree with you. I think that it needs to go along with the size of units or the number of bedrooms or however you want to give that range. We do know that we've had parking problems in the past, and we can't create worse parking problems because that's what gets people upset. And those are some of the most comments that we've had from our constituents. Anybody that's gone out there and walked around and talked to people, it's it's parking. The reality is, like it or not, we live in a college town, and a lot of units end up being purchased by speculators and they get rented out to college students. And again, like it or not, a lot of those college students come with a car. So, you know, that's why, you know, maybe looking at size or number of bedrooms might be a better judge so that we're sure that we have, you know, adequate parking. As far as the number of cottages, it was said that there was twenty-four and maybe lowering that, I I think that it's better to set the expectations upfront. And the reason I feel that is because, for instance, the whole Kessing Ranch thing, I can remember when that started out, it was seventy-six units. And then it got dropped to sixty some odd units, and now it's forty-six. And I think that that causes us a lot of stops and starts. And as Councilmember Sparks pointed out, you know, you you end up with people saying it doesn't pencil out or it doesn't this or it doesn't get built. Well, part of that has to do with, you know, we probably never really wanted that much, but it was allowed, so developers are going to push to the ends of the limits. They just are because it means more profits for them. That's just a reality. So when they say pencil out, that's what that means, the more units, the more profit. I'm concerned about the minimums. I agree with Councilmember Ford on, you know, having different kinds, but my concern is in these general housing areas that we're talking about. If we have a lower limit and it's four or five hundred or three hundred, and by right someone can build an A D U that's a thousand to twelve hundred, it kind of goes to that conversation that that Councilmember Sparks was having, then the A D U becomes the primary unit. So we have to, I think, do better at sizing the right sizes in in different areas so that we don't kind of get ahead of ourselves. Lastly, I am really feeling not very good about this whole noticing. We said we've had a couple of public hearings and things like that. My guess is that when those have been noticed, that they did not go to the people specifically that wanted to know about housing, as was said, that we have a list of people that want to know. My guess is we didn't do a mailing to them. My guess is that the noticing said, we're going to talk about cottage ordinance, and that meant nothing to people. It really didn't tell them specifically that we were changing the zoning. And that's a bigger discussion, and people, you know, tend to want to get into that. And my very last thing is I just really am having a great deal of trouble supporting this ordinance in the R V L. I just think that as it's written, it's it's just not appropriate and it goes back to setting expectations. If you set an expectation to a developer that they can build all this stuff, they're going to push it to the nth degree. And as was pointed out by others, I think that you would change the character of the rural areas. So thank you for that.
Looks like you're on after all, Mr. Vice Mayor.
And did the whole Zoom go down or was it just a couple of us?
It was just you.
Oh, great.
And Laura was talking but muted.
I was just trying to see if 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 it was me, because everything just froze, so.
Uh, Councilmember Landman here, muted.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to tell you, I it appears to me we're up to Councilmember Sparks speaking next, I think. She had her hand up next.
And I just missed the tail end of Councilmember Harvey's comment.
I'm sorry. What what part did you want me to repeat?
I would say just the last thirty seconds, maybe?
That I really am having trouble supporting this with the R V L as it's written.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Sparks, you have had some more comments?
Yeah, thank you. I I had just one smaller issue. There was a portion in the ordinance that says the size of the, oh, the floor area and number of bedrooms shall be varied within a development. And I wondered if we could loosen that a little bit because it seems like it should be okay if somebody wanted to build four identical units. I wouldn't really see a problem with that. It's more like in larger developments with a lot of units, we would want to see more variability. I'd hate to have to have someone have added expense to like design two different units, slightly different square foot, just to meet that line of the ordinance. So I don't know if someone on staff could address that.
Mr. Harris, is that something that you want to try to answer on that or no?
The thought there was just to try to, I think you're right, it does apply to larger type developments, and it was to provide for housing sizes to serve families of different sizes or singles, just to provide, you know, we didn't want to get something that was all studios. At the same time, we didn't want to see all three or four bedroom type units, you know? So what that was the that was the motivation behind that.
Councilmember Ford, I I do want to ask you a question. When you were talking about the electrical and you don't, if I understood you correctly, you were indicating that you thought fifty percent charging stations would be more than adequate?
Right.
In in these type of units, and you're basing that on your personal experience and and the situation that you live in?
Right, right.
So if you're in a in a situation that is not a cool housing neighborhood or an agreement like that, I don't know that you can always have a relationship with your neighbor that would allow you to do those types of things. would allow you to do those types of things. Ideally, we would like to have these be areas where you would have a cooperation between the neighbors and get to know each other and things like that, but in reality, it doesn't always occur. But I wonder if that is kind of taken into consideration?
Well, can I respond briefly?
Absolutely, this is actually what this is about, I think.
Okay, so my point is that it's not about necessarily cooperation between neighbors, it's about technological solutions that allow you to pull up to any charger in the parking lot that's open and use it. So just like I can go over to City Hall and charge with one of the chargers that's over there, there are systems designed for multifamily housing that are exactly like that, you just pull out your smartphone and say, "Start my charge on charger number 13." And so half of the spaces having chargers is guaranteed to have significant number of open chargers every night available for people who need to charge at that at night. Just because modern electric cars all have 200-plus mile range and nobody charges every night, maybe the one person who works in San Jose, but that's it.
Yeah, I can see where you may not have as much of a demand, especially with the future of work being different than we've been used to and less people commuting. And pardon my naivety in this, but if you have a solar panel on your home and you are responsible for your electric generation, wouldn't you want to charge your vehicle under your premise?
Well, multifamily electric vehicle charging uses a commercial EV charging rate that is only, so it doesn't use a, like a single-family home, charging EV rate which is directly off of your home meter. So it's not really a comparable situation. Well, I suppose if you have individual chargers at each, individual parking spaces and chargers at each home, that would be a different situation. And so that might be an appropriate place to require that, at least it's possible to install. I do have a lot of concern about requiring installation of things that will not see use until they're obsolete. These things change, the technology is changing really fast and it's, these things are not 30-year life like solar panels.
Okay, so certainly something to consider on that.
Yeah.
Well, there's so many things that I think that have come up, and granted, there's a lot of work that has been done on this. The concern that maybe folks that may have a greater concern were not necessarily understanding of what the cottage housing ordinance was. So I'm wondering if there is consensus there to maybe have this go back to planning and potentially have another, and I know staff would hate to even hear this, but potentially have another public workshop on this and how that might work out and then come back to planning? I mean, come back to council after a public workshop with greater input if needed? So I don't know what the council consensus might appear.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I can work to answer your consensus question a little bit, and also I didn't get a chance to do my comments here.
Oh, my apologies, Vice Mayor Landman.
Probably message to make shorter rather than longer, but I struggle with that. So in general, love discussion, it's helpful. I'm hearing what's being said about chargers and listening to someone, actually, guys' experiences helpful. My question can remain, how does that work in a non-co-housing situation? But I think if we could just add the spec to our ordinance that says there will be, I forget how Councilmember Ford described it, but there will be a shared billing solution built in, so these can be used, that would satisfy my needs and I think do that job. I'm glad there seems to be some agreement on reducing the clustering. I had made in my notes a note like 12 to 16. I thought it sounded like we settled in 12, it was some flexibility. You know, I like that idea because it sounds like the flexibility, as much as I recognize that's a door, you know, that's a big door, you have to be careful, it can also help us with a couple of other concerns I have. For example, parking, we've talked about that. A very good suggestion pointed out if we're not counting street parking, it may be adjacent and actually available, not regularly overused like we see by the train station. That certainly might make a difference. There may be no need to require additional parking there. Indeed, you may be able to get by with less, and I'd certainly be open to that. So perhaps we can build that into how we do this. It makes the language a little more nebulous, but it gives us that room to do that. Similarly with size, I remember as a very young man with two young daughters, my wife and I, four of us living in a 1,200 square foot house in Paloma, it was tight, but it was very, very doable. I could see two people living on something half that size. I'm personally not ready to go down to just lowering it to 500, considering where we started at, what, at 800 feet? Because my goal is to keep these more like individual homes, not really small. But I'm also hearing what Councilmember Ford said about some areas in the town, that might be a good idea to go smaller. I could see potential in a future downtown Cattati, depending how development plays out, some smaller units designed for one or two people in a larger amount, a much smaller size. And I would like to maintain the flexibility to be able to do that. So I wondered, even if we just stayed at 600, would we have the ability, neighborhood by neighborhood, to change that to fit? If we could do that, then I could agree with this and perhaps my colleagues would be less worried about where the size currently sits. I'll just say that, you know, I do, I don't want to get into ultra-high density, I want to do something that helps us answer the density problem and gives us some slightly more affordable homes, but at the same time still fits as well as possible to look and feel Cattati and not go in the direction of San Jose, other than perhaps some of the downtown areas where I could see some higher density. So I guess the last comment for me, and I'd love to see what everybody else thinks about that, I share some of my colleagues' concerns. I'm not ready to go forward with including the RVL area, at least as it currently stands. I'm open to hearing of potentially lowering that density a little bit if that's workable, or, you know, my preference would just be to remove it because I don't see, I know the difference in zoning, obviously, but pragmatically and looking at a map and looking at 30 years of living here, I see little difference between the RVL and the RR places. And I understand some of the concerns that others might have. I would like to see this come back by the nature of my comments. I don't see the need for another, we had two public workshops and two meetings, if we have one more meeting, I think that's plenty of notice for those who were involved that wish to speak. And that's kind of where I'm sitting, so I think a lot of it, if we could agree that perhaps flexibility might help us with the parking and with the size question, I think we're good to go other than the question of RVL.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Councilmember, I wanted to address some of the things Councilmember Landman said about the size, that the minimum square foot requirement. I might have been hearing wrong, but it sounded like you were talking about, like he was talking about density together with the minimum square foot size? And if I was hearing that wrong, then I apologize, but just wanted to reemphasize that the density, right, is tied to the underlying density of the zone. So even if you're allowing very small units, it doesn't cause you to be able to build more of them on a site. So maybe I was hearing that wrong. But then the other question, I just was sort of interested in understanding more what Councilmember Landman's concerns were about having a smaller unit. I'm really in favor of allowing these small units because the way I see it, people who can only afford to live, there are lots of people who live in ADUs or even junior ADUs where they can, that's really the only type of housing that they can afford, or a very small condo, a very small apartment. And if they're only, if they want to live in one of these more neighborhood park-like settings and not a multifamily setting, then right now they're precluded from owning a home because the ADU's ownership is attached to the main unit that it is associated with. So I really like the idea of allowing these cottage units to go down to a smaller level, even in the low-density and medium-density areas, because that would allow more people to own their own home, to be able to own the very small unit that they live in, which I think would be great.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thanks, I was replying to your suggestion about where we go next, and I agree with Vice Mayor Landman that I don't think another public hearing is necessary, but I do think perhaps another, one additional beyond the final, I mean, before the final city council meeting might be necessary to get a little more information. And in particular, what I'd like to ask of staff is that we have some discussion of the impact of development comparing current maximum allowable development on a very low-density site. So say, you know, a half-acre lot, which is the smallest you can put a house on, 10% coverage is about 2,000 square feet, so you could put in a, you know, a 3,000 square foot house and still have 500 square feet to build walkways and whatever. You're pretty limited there, but you can go up. Compare that with kind of what the maximum would be under the cottage housing, because I think, first of all, I agree with Pat Gilardi that the site plan for Cypress probably shouldn't have been in the packet because it didn't accurately reflect what the impact would look like. And I think many of us, when we look at potential development, are comparing vacant land with development at the maximum that looks like it's allowed by code. And so to compare the current allowed development with what this ordinance would allow would be a better comparison and allow us to make judgments about whether, I believe that cottage housing design would actually produce less impact for neighbors than current maximum size of mansion built on every half acre. But that's my perception of impact, and I'd like to see some comparison of what those impacts might look like, if we want to consider, as I would like to include the very low zone.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman?
Just two things real quickly, Mr. Mayor. First of all, replying to Councilmember Sparks, no, perhaps I didn't express it well, but no, I wasn't talking about density being tied to size, I recognize that that density's going to be tied into the zoning regardless of the size of the houses. What I am saying is though, I've long agreed to, smaller increases more housing, even if it's not greater density, but higher portions of smaller houses right on top of each other with less space is logical in places where there are jobs, transit, and urban cores. And we have some of that in Cattati. But in other neighborhoods, I do differ, I think, from my colleague in that. I'm not supportive of that throughout the rest of the town, because a lot of the rest of the town, that doesn't fit in my experience. I'm representing the interests of the people that have lived their lives here and although are open to some charming cottage infill development, then we'll have a slightly higher zoning overlay in it, probably don't want a lot of 300 and 400-foot little teeny houses. I would say shacks, that sounds more aggressive than I made it to, but that's would be the perception. That I'm not supportive of. I don't think that brings any value to Cattati. We're trying to balance an interest in more housing, meeting arena needs, but also maintaining the character of this community. And if we just open it up to building as many little houses as we can, especially since their market rate, not only do I think it doesn't solve the solution, but we lose what we currently have. So that's just where I'm at on that right now, so I know you asked that. Lastly, very quickly, I forgot to mention, I would like very much to keep the eight feet between the homes. I think that's important. I have flexibility if somebody wanted to have a larger green area and draw up a little there, again, that could fit under the flexibility rubric, but I think it's important for these not to be the right staff on top of each other, otherwise they're not cottages as we've been led to expect them and as the community, in a limited discussion we've had about it at three previous meetings, might have felt it would be. So just my thoughts, and I wanted, did want to put that in about the space between the houses, some flexibility, but I don't really want to lower it to fight off of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Thank you. I'd like to bring back up the size thing. While in certain areas within the city, I think it is worthwhile for us to consider tiny homes or small studios or whatever you want to call them. My concern is on some of these other ones, if by right, we have no choice and they can put an ADU on these things, are we not kind of defeating the purpose there? Because we don't have a choice. So to say that we're going to limit it or we're going to request that they go down to, I've heard different numbers, 250, 350, 400, when by right, they can also put a 1,000-square-foot ADU, that just doesn't mesh. And I don't know how we get around that because of the state ADU ordinances where we don't have a choice. So that's a concern. And then on the RVL, I just really feel like this is a new ordinance, like many new ordinances that we've developed over the years. We go slow in our community, we kind of, you know, put our toes in the waters, we start with a certain thing, we did that with the fast food ordinance, we did that with cannabis, you know, when it's something that's drastically changing the community, the community does better when we start slow. See how that works and then change accordingly. So my preference would be for us to leave the RVL out for now, go with the other things because they're more consistent with neighborhoods, I mean, they even say neighborhood in it, and then see how that works for us, get some of them under our belt, and then come back and address it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I wanted to address something Councilmember Hardy brought up about the ADU. I think that, if I'm remembering what Mr. Harris said correctly, we could limit the size of the ADUs to 800 square feet rather than 1,000. I think that's correct.
I thought, I mean, that's, you're asking the same thing. I thought we couldn't by state law, and that was my concern, is what are the state laws? What do we have a choice in and what don't we? And maybe JP can answer that for us.
I'll have to double-check, but ADU development, even when you start running into various standards, you have to allow an 800-square-foot ADU. And that's, and actually, and that's reflected in our ordinance, but now thinking about this a little further and hearing this, there is a provision within the state law that if it's a two-bedroom ADU allows for 1,000 square feet. So I think it's either or, it's either 800 if it's one bedroom or less, or 1,000 square feet if it's two bedrooms or more. Yeah, there's that weird little quirk in the law that adjusts it based on the size. So that would be the minimum, so that would be the minimum, so, yeah. I think that, yeah.
That's regardless of the size of the unit?
Um.
Primary unit?
That's correct.
I'm going to stop you guys there for a minute and we can come back to this. It is 9:55, and we would need a motion to continue beyond 10?
Reluctantly so moved.
Back end, reluctantly.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Bridges, you want to do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. And then I believe the next hand up was Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. So just continuing the discussion on this point about the ADU attached to the the cottage, the, if we, okay, I'm just trying to understand the concern, because if we have a small unit that's 500, let's say 500 square feet, and we're concerned that that could attach, that we could have an 800-square-feet or 1,000-square-foot ADU attached to that, which would be really strange, that it sounds like that could happen. The alternative to that would be, one alternative to that would be for someone to build a 1,600-square-foot house with an 800- or 1,000-foot ADU. So if we're, I just don't quite understand what the concern is with the, it would be weird to have a little cottage with an ADU attached to it, but to me, it wouldn't have any greater of an impact than having a big house, like a big 1,600-square-foot house with an ADU on it. So it doesn't pose quite the same level of concern to me. I'm just trying to understand that.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say, we've had a pretty great discussion on this. I've heard some good information. It's moved me in a few things. I think staff's had a chance to see some emerging consensus and issues, and also hear most of the comments, and also recognize what perhaps are the minority comments. And with that, I'd like to suggest that we bring this back to have our second first reading at a subsequent meeting, whenever it's convenient for staff. That'll give them some time to review this. It will give the public some time to chew on what they've heard and watched tonight and work as they will. And then we can have one more public meeting to go over this and hopefully have something that we can move forward with, because I think we're relatively close on at least most of the issues. Maybe there's one major issue that's problematic, but I think most of the others, we're kind of there. So that would be my suggestion tonight. If the council agrees, I'd like to give that direction to staff.
Mr. Harris and Mr. House, do you think that you have enough information to take away from here and then come back at another meeting?
This is Noah House. I do actually think we do, and I'd like to hear JP, but I have a summary list I'd like to just provide to the council to try to make sure that we've captured all the direction we've heard, and then allow you to kind of edit it or JP to chime in on anything that I've missed.
Okay. Councilmember Sparks, did you need a greater clarification on the ADU issue?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, that'd be great, Mr. House and Mr. Harris.
Before Noah goes with his list, I did want to make a comment, which is that the planning commission already saw the version of the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. That if the council had made any changes, significant changes to the ordinance, it would have to go back to the planning commission in any event. So if you had staff come back next in front of this body, and you made additional changes to the ordinance, it would have to go back to the planning commission again for them to review it, and then it would have to come back to the council. So procedurally, it might be more appropriate for you all to direct that staff work on the consensus that sort of developed around a few of the issues, take that back to the planning commission, and then come back to the council. And that would give the planning commission an opportunity to review it before you hear it the next time. But I will leave that with the council. I'm just trying to save a meeting, perhaps.
And I think if I run through my list, we can decide if they're substantive enough to need to go back to the commission or not, because I think from my perspective...
From what I heard, there were a number of items that I would indicate would need to go back, taking RVL out, a number of them, I thought, would require to go back to the planning commission.
And Ms. Barker, what would be the number of issues that would mandate or suggest going back to planning?
Well, it's basically if the commission hadn't seen a proposal or considered a proposal in the past, and maybe, I mean, Noah, I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, so perhaps the commission did hear a number of these items that the council has talked about, but, you know, the minimums and what districts it applied to. I think, I just, my impression was that it was going to have to go back to the planning commission, but I could be wrong.
Oh, what I'd like to do is maybe write the list of what we heard from the council to ensure consensus with the direction, and then once we kind of take that direction and implement the ordinance, we can work with the city attorney's office if needed to determine what the appropriate process is to make sure that we meet the requirements.
That sounds good. Do I have a consensus on that with the council?
Do we need to have consensus on all these items? On some of these, I'm assuming the things we have consensus on, and others we might not be finalized on. Is that correct?
I'm just looking to make sure I touch on all the items that are of interest to the council in the ordinance.
Good. Okay, then that would encompass what I said. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. House, go ahead.
Thank you. So there's an interest in revising the parking requirements to have them be graduated either by bedroom or unit sizes to more appropriately fit the future developments. There's an interest in ensuring that EV charging is adequate to serve all residences and potentially using communal chargers to do that, not necessarily requiring every parking space to provide EV charging. There's an interest in reducing the cluster sizes that are required from 24 currently. There's an interest in potentially reducing the amount of private and public open space to try to facilitate some of these projects. There's an interest in allowing smaller unit sizes, and specifically in the neighborhood urban zoning district, to allow kind of a little bit more dense developments to occur downtown while still providing single individual ownership. There's a request to clarify the, how the ADU allowances would fit within a cottage housing development. There's a request to ensure we adequately notice the next hearing, or do our best to ensure anyone with housing interest is notified of these changes. And there's direction to consider removing the application of this ordinance from the residential very-low zoning, very-low-density zoning district, and at a minimum to provide some additional development analysis, kind of identifying how some of these projects may actually fit, given the existing zoning constraints which we didn't present.
Unless there's something else, I think that sounds like a pretty good list to go with. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we discussed the reduction in unit size per, I don't think we discussed it per zoning level, because I was certainly interested in beyond the urban, also in the neighborhood medium and the neighborhood low zones. And that might be in disagreement with some of the other councilmembers. I'm not sure what everyone else was thinking about neighborhood medium or neighborhood low.
Okay. I think I can address, or ask the council on that. I am, I think that it should be more applicable to the type, to the zone where it is, if you want to build with smaller units. Councilmember Ford or Councilmember Harvey, do you have any input on that?
Well, I would support the ordinance being open to smaller units in at least neighborhood medium. I can't think of a downside to the city with that, given that it does not increase the number of units that the developers can build. So I think, in fact, the minimum coming into play is only likely to happen in the densest areas, because developers are going to build what they, in order for projects to pencil, they'll go with slightly larger units. I wanted to follow up with one question that I sort of heard being implied, I think, in some of what Noah and JP brought up, which is, is it the assumption that these developments have to be owner, like ownership, not rental? And is it the assumption that they will be subdivided into single-family home lots rather than, say, condo ownership?
Yeah, so we're not, we're, right now, the cottage housing would allow unsubdivided kind of decentralized rental units, so kind of a broken apart apartment project, as well as condominiums, as well as traditional either townhomes or rowhomes where the land is owned or straight subdivisions. And this plays into the ADU question, because, you know, in a multifamily situation, even if it's condominiums, you obviously can't add on an ADU to your backyard that you don't own, right? So then there are some provisions that allow a minimum of two ADUs to be built on a multifamily housing design, even if that's condos. So some of the communal space could be added, ADUs could be added to that, but it would be, it would be essentially a homeowner, HOA, proposing to build ADUs in the future if the whole thing was sold as condominiums. Or if you think about what size of a lot you would have on a, let's go with a 400-square-foot house, right? Single-family home, 400 square feet on its own lot, that lot size is going to dictate the location of the ADU, and the ADU is limited to four-foot minimum setbacks from the side and the rear, and cannot be located in the front yard. So there's all these other constraining factors, similar to the lot coverage issue, that will affect this. But to the council's point, which I think added confusion, we didn't really flesh that out, how it will apply. So when we come back, we will vet some of those issues to allow the discussion to be a little bit more informed, because there's a lot of sideboards that are placed on it, separate from what lives just in the cottage housing ordinance.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, because I felt like our discussion was driven too much by an assumption of ADUs and JADUs partnered with every unit, which assumes a single-family lot subdivision.
Okay, so since there is, I don't think we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, one more quick thing, if I might?
Certainly.
Sorry about that, but I just wanted to clarify something. I had my computer do the dreaded slowdown for a couple of minutes when Mr. Barker was speaking, and I missed some of what he was saying. And I wasn't sure, I think he might have been saying to save a meeting that perhaps this could bypass coming back to us first to see what resolved and staff might have found to what they heard from us and see if we could get to a consensus, instead take that to planning. Was that correct?
That's correct. I was thinking we could create a scenario where it comes back to council, has to go back down to planning commission, and then come back to council for introduction, and then you have to have a second reading. So there would be four council meetings on this ordinance.
Just personally for me, I would much, I recognize the problem. Apologies to staff and everybody else, but I would much rather have this come back, so I can see, and we can as a group, come to some agreement when we send back to planning, because otherwise we could be in a position of where we're still not happy with that. And I don't want to repeat the loop again. So ultimately, we might save more meetings that way, I think. So that's just my personal take. That's what I would hope we would do. With that, I'm happy with the list put forward. I agree with Mr. Ford. I am not thrilled about the idea of lots of smaller households, or at least not sold on it yet, but I do agree with his agreement that there's a potential need in the core areas where we've discussed this for years. And I certainly would like to see something that would allow that possibility while at the same time not allow a developer to pursue the hills of Cypress with something like that, which was probably unlikely, but I think we can do that. So with that, I'd be good going to see this come back to us next time.
Okay. So Mr. House and Mr. Harris, do you guys have enough information? I think that you guys touched on all the issues that we were concerned about.
Yeah.
So with that, I don't know that we need a motion to have this come back to us, do we? No. Okay. Thank you very much for your patience, for all the work that's been put into that. I, as Vice Mayor Lemon would indicate, I certainly appreciate the thought and the concern brought up. So with that, it is 10:10. I know we have a couple of other things. We'll determine how much we're going to take on after this, but I would like to take a five-minute bio break if we can, if that works for everybody. It's 10:10. Let's actually call it, yeah, 10:20, and we'll come right back at 10:20. So we will adjourn the meeting for 10 minutes and then come back. Thank you. Thank you. We'll give it just a few more minutes for for those others to come back and we'll open it back up at 10:20. I like how Vice Mayor Lemon puts it, it's a robust conversation.
And I smile gently when I say it. In the fire service, we used to call meeting when we had a day that was full, we called it a rich full day. You might say we've had a rich full meeting so far.
More to come.
More to come.
There we go. Okay, I have 10:20 and appears that all of our council is here. I can see everybody, yes. Okay, I did want to make a quick announcement for those that may have any questions. Anytime that we have a motion and a vote to extend the meeting beyond 10:00 PM, that's a procedural issue and not an action item, so it's not subject to public comment if I'm correct on that, Mr. Barker?
Correct.
Thank you very much. So with that in mind, I will move on to our regular agenda, item number 11A, consideration of a commercial cannabis permit for cultivation and distribution at 430 Aaron Street, Halcyon Enterprises. And I thank the folks from Halcyon that are here and the staff, of course, for bearing with us at such a late hour. And does this go to Mr. House or Mr. Ovid?
Senior Planner, Senior Planner Harris will also be presenting the Halcyon.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Senior Planner Harris, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, Senior Planner Harris, Senior Planner with the City of Kattati. And then if Lauren is available, if she could, I have a brief presentation, it's very brief, trust me, and I'll make it brief for her. And then there's also some slides by the applicant that they would like to share. And in the past, for the members that have been, of the council that have been with us in the past, we've typically looked at cannabis applications in batches. And that's because we used to run an RFP or in the last case, they just kind of, the timing was such that they all came in at the same time. But we have an open application period now and so that's why you're seeing a single cannabis permit tonight, whereas before, you know, we usually looked at a few of these at a time. This begins on packet page 119, it was a Gen 11A, and it is a consideration, a city council consideration to grant a, what's basically a business license, a commercial cannabis permit to the Halcyon Enterprises for cultivation and and distribution activities at operating out of 430 Aaron Street. And can you go to the next slide, Lauren, please? Just for some background, in November 7th of 2017, Kattati voters passed Measure G, which established a cannabis business tax. That was followed in February 2018 with ordinance 833, which established both parameters for personal personal cultivation on residential properties as well as the locations and regulations for commercial cannabis activity. And it established the maximum number of the different type of cannabis uses, commercial cannabis uses, businesses within the city limits. So since February 13th, since adoption of that ordinance, the council has granted permits to 18 potential businesses. Of those, nine are operating or in most cases, they're actually just making progress to operating. We have three operating cannabis businesses right now in the city. And six of the permits were, have expired, were withdrawn or were abandoned by the permitting. Next slide, please. And this is the breakdown of all the current cannabis, commercial cannabis permits in the city. It's divided into three sections. The top section has cultivation, of which there are five total allowed cultivation businesses in the city. The middle section is for manufacturing, standalone distribution or delivery, retail delivery services. Also, labs would fit in there, but we haven't had any laboratories. There's seven of those allowed total in the city. And then we allow for two storefront retailers. Both of those licensed are spoken for at this time, one of them is currently operating. On the far right column, you can see how many, if we issued a permit tonight, which is a cultivation, there will be one more permit available for cultivation in the city. There will be two more, there's, there is two more manufacturing permits available. However, I am reviewing an application for, that will consume one of these. So we're getting down to the end of the potential cannabis businesses that would be allowed in the city. And we'll be looking forward to seeing them actually get up and operating, the majority of them. Next slide, please. So Halcyon Enterprises is proposing to operate out of 430 Aaron Street. This is in the IG or General Industrial Zoning District. They're requesting a Type 3A license, which is medium, which is a medium outdoor cultivation license, which allows up to 10, excuse me, 22,000 square feet of canopy. As you'll see in the next couple of slides, they have six primary grow rooms in the building as well as other rooms for cloning, drying, processing cannabis materials and some office space as well. And then the eastern side of the building is kind of dedicated to their distribution activities. It's a kind of, functions as a separate function within the cannabis structure, or the commercial cannabis business structure. It is a permitted use, so there is no use permit required for this, but it does require the business permit to be granted by the city council. And they are proposing a phased operation, that they're going to be taking over a little more than half of the building in phase one and then three years later, and if I'm wrong on that, they can correct me, Stefan or or Kenneth or Kai, there's three folks, they can can discuss that if you're interested in that. But it's going to start on more, a little more than half the building and then expand into the second building over a couple of years, or the second half of the building. Next slide, please. And that is the building there at 430 Aaron, so it's kind of right at the intersection of Hauser and Aaron Street. And, next slide, please. And this is the floor plan of the building that's proposed and you can see basically the large vegetative grow rooms and then smaller, kind of in the center, there's some smaller areas where there's processing and activities. Overall, their application was complete, thorough in their addressing the code requirements that we have for cannabis as well. This is not a new operator, they do have other cannabis grow operation and so are familiar with the business and what, you know, what it takes to actually run a business. And next slide. So we're recommending adoption of the resolution, granting a commercial cannabis business permit to Halcyon Enterprises. They would be eligible if granted this permit by by the city council, they would be eligible to apply for state licenses for both distribution and 3A growing cultivation. And the resolution is on page 166 of the packet. And with that, I'm going to finish my presentation and I'm available for questions, but as I said, they have a couple of slides that they'd like to share with you. And I would like to also thank them for their patience and endurance in getting through this meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I will go ahead and allow for them to offer a presentation if they would like. And who do we have that's going to speak?
Hi, my name is Kenneth Peralta and I'm Chief Executive of Halcyon Enterprises. And thank you, we're grateful to have your time this evening at this late hour. It's been a lot of work for our team to arrive to this place and thanks to Mr. Harris and Mr. House for their support along the way. We're hopeful and excited to become active participants in the Kattati community. I wanted just to take a couple of minutes on the next slide and introduce our team real quick. Lauren Riggins is the Sales and Compliance Director and also takes care of HR for us and she's on the call. She's a San Francisco native and over six years in the cannabis business and is very good at auditing our internal security and really all processes versus what our procedures are. She's a lovely person. Kai is heading operations for us. He was involved with the first vertically integrated facility in Colorado and he was involved really from blueprints all the way to sales. He grew that to a $5 million business and managed 20 people there. He can fix pretty much any mechanical or electrical system and we're really glad to have him. On the next slide, you'll see my partner Stefan Dahlke. He's the founder and operator of 92 Light Facility in San Francisco. It's one of only 12 permitted facilities, cultivation facilities in the city. And he's really operated the pilot project that makes it possible for us to come here with this expansion to Kattati. And again, my name is Ken Peralta. I spent the last seven years in a small town in West Virginia, coordinating federal funding through the USDA, EPA and other agencies and working with the local city officials on food security and community resiliency programs around food. And so on the next slide, just a little bit about how we're different and what we're interested in. Again, we've been in the Bay Area for over a decade and have worked with, developed relationships in many agencies. One thing that makes us different from a lot of cannabis operators is just simply having a professional team and that's something that we take pride in. On the next slide, one thing that makes us a lot different from other, all other cultivators is that we get very high yields and consistent quality, sometimes 50% higher than other cultivators. And on the next slide is one of the reasons really why we're able to do this is we've really taken principles of controlled environment agriculture. It's been driven by food, the food industry and brought it into cannabis cultivation. And we're really using indoor farming methods as is done and is an imperative according to the USDA to feed the people in the world. And we're also borrowing from manufacturing, using a statistical process control to track and control the variables in our processes. That's related to the next slide, which is to say that we really do have a local preference for hiring folks to work with us. We're going to be about 20, probably closer to 25 people in total and we want to give benefits to our folks, including profit sharing and take care of everybody. All of our managers really have an up and out management philosophy where we train the persons that are working on jobs in our departments so that they can eventually take over our jobs. And just to say that if two candidates are equal in all measures, that we would give hiring preference to local candidates and to vendors also. So I think that we're bringing some pretty interesting skills and good jobs into the community and we're really proud to be doing that. On the next slide is our Good Neighbor Policy. More than anything, we want to leave Kattati a better place after our arrival and don't want any person to experience any loss or difficulty in the community as it relates to us. So we actually have a written Good Neighbor Policy. We reach out to all of our neighbors so they know who we are and give a 48-hour commitment to resolving any issues that are brought to our attention when they're within our control. Also, we will be active in posting and forcing against loitering. And many times, and many cities have found that with the additional security patrols and camera, that in fact, there's less vagrancy and less homeless encampment in areas where new cultivations are moving in. And finally, just a total commitment to a zero odor nuisance. It is possible to eliminate odor. We have a closed-loop air filtration system that uses both HEPA filters and volatile organic compound filter, which basically disrupts the molecular structure of the smell particles, if you will. On the next slide, just to say about our cultivation practices, we, our philosophy is really to maximize philosophy is really to maximize yield and quality and keep minimizing inputs and waste. Uh, uh, we are working with PG&E, uh, and Sonoma Clean Power to be able to have, uh, zero footprint or a low footprint, at least on our electrical consumption. Uh, all of the water and nutrients are reclaimed in our system, it's a closed loop system, there's no drain to waste. And just like everything in our shop, we're under a continuous improvement process, uh, constantly tracking how we can improve what we're doing. That really motivates our people. And just the final slide is, uh, some of the things that we're interested in, uh, community resiliency, healthy local food and farms, uh, arts education. Personally, I'm interested in, uh, self-defense training. There are some other areas also, but I made the PowerPoint, so I guess mostly my interests made it on the slide. But, uh, we're, as I said, we're really, uh, excited to have an opportunity to come to Katati.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peralta. Um, and if that's it, I will bring this back to the council if they have any existing questions right now. Councilmember Ford?
I just wanted to ask the applicant if, if he could fill us in a little on his existing operations. I, I checked the company as quite a new company, and I'm wondering if it's a sort of a new version of a company that has more of history than last September?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, that's exactly right, that, uh, uh, Production Management Systems is the company my partner Stefan started. Uh, I believe it was twenty seventeen, Stefan, do I have that right, uh, as a start date? Uh, you might be on mute, actually. Yes, twenty seventeen that started and, uh, basically was growing up into a business, uh, kind of slowly, transitioned out of medical and, uh, into adult use with its license. And really, uh, over the last two years has been reaching kind of industry-leading results. So, that's a fully cash flowing business, they do about three million in sales, uh, a little bit over a million two of cash flow, uh, every year out of that business, it's quite profitable and, again, really was the blueprint to allow us to move to this larger
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I had a quick question for senior planner Harries. Um, does the, does the application for the class eleven permit, is that the type that's sort of built in, so it doesn't count against our total for that category, or is it a separate, um, class eleven distribution?
Yeah, no, in this case, it's, um, it, it would not count against our, our, our count. It's not a standalone distribution operation. It, um, there is certain separation requirements through state law, but, but it's all integrated, uh, together here. Um, so yes, would not count against our, our maximum number of permits.
Thank you. And then I had a question for, um, for our guests tonight also. Um, I, I noticed that you're using this PCO system for odor control, and I, um, looked that up and saw it was originally designed by NASA for, for use in spacecraft, which I thought was pretty neat. I wondered if you could just say a couple of words about the odor control to reassure us that, that that would eliminate the odors?
Absolutely, I think that would be a great thing for Kai to sound in on the syllable technical details. Uh, Kai, can you raise your hand or do what you have to do to chime in?
He's welcome just to speak.
There he is.
Uh, yeah, so, um, when it comes down to the, uh, the, the PCO process, yeah, it was originally, uh, innovated from NASA. We actually brought in-
Kai, can I interrupt you for a moment just to turn up your mic?
Sure. Can you hear me better now?
Much better, thank you.
Yes, of course. Uh, yeah, so it was originally developed by NASA, we actually brought in a third-party, um, uh, consultant who specializes in, uh, these types of systems utilized for, uh, multiple industries, cannabis being one of them, um, but other, uh, high, uh, you know, uh, systems that produce, you know, larger volumes of, of odors, uh, one of them being broccoli, actually. Um, so the idea for the system is, is that we basically use multi-stages, so the, the PCO process will just be filtering the air within the rooms itself. Um, then, uh, the air that's actually going to be drawn out of the rooms, allowing pressure air intake, will be drawn through the HEPA and carbon filter systems. Um, and they, uh, will then go out into a, a secondary PCO process before they're, uh, actually emitted out of the building. Additionally, all of the hallways and other room areas will be under a negative pressure system drawing into, uh, carbon filters as well, so that when doors are open, the, uh, any of the smells that do escape will actually, uh, be drawn up into those systems and filtered and then emitted from the building. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Kai. Uh, Vice Mayor Lemon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of questions for our, for Mr. Peralta or his team, and then one for staff. To begin, you mentioned in, in terms of planned hiring, uh, six to eight employees to start, and then up to fifteen twenty-five, this sounds great, always happy to see it, and you beat me to the punch, asking about local preference, usually myself or the mayor or Councilman Harvey generally ask about that, so clearly you've done your homework, I appreciate that. One last question, do you give me a general idea where this range of jobs might land in terms of hourly or annual wage? Will they fall within a living wage, uh, you know, which I think is about nineteen dollars, a little over that in this county right now, or minimum wage, which is about two-thirds of that? Where will these jobs sit?
Uh, thank you for your question, uh, that's a, a good question. Uh, they will sit, uh, above the, uh, higher standard that you suggested. Uh, you know, uh, across America, the cannabis industry is creating, uh, a lot of jobs, and typically, uh, from the research I've seen, they are, uh, fifteen percent or so higher above median income in areas, and I think we would be the same. I think especially once the facility is up and running, uh, we want to have profit sharing and, in most cases, also, uh, ownership of the business by our employees. Uh, we really want it to be running on its own as soon as it can, uh, and, you know, again, have our staff be pulling up their staff, our managers pulling up their staff to take their jobs, so that the managers can go out and, uh, be working on, on other projects as we, uh, continue to grow in the years to come. So I think that, I think there'll be great jobs, uh, both in terms of pay and benefits, but also in terms, as I said earlier, of the skills being learned, they're very transferable to other ag businesses and entrepreneurial ventures as well.
So with the median income being roughly eighty-one K right now in Sonoma County, you're saying your place will probably be roughly fifteen percent over that?
Uh, I would say, uh, some of them definitely will. Uh, I think at the low-
I mean, there would be a range certainly, depending on what the job is and entry level versus a little time on the job.
Yeah, I can just say, uh, that we anticipate, uh, you know, based on our staff budgets, that the salaries are, are generally higher. Uh, some of the lower part-time, uh, hourly people, of course, are not going to be above the, above that median.
Right, I understood. Well, all I can say is get to the fifteen twenty-five employees as quick as you can. So one more question for you or your team, Mr. Peralta. You mentioned on your transmitter letter, environmental preservation being called out, and you also in your, uh, presentation tonight mentioned working with Sonoma Clean Power environmental issues, but other than some cost reducing measures, most notably the LED usage, reducing energy by a rather impressive sixty-six percent compared to the standard lights, and reducing generated heat by roughly fifty percent, thus reducing air conditioning. Um, there's nothing, those are cost savings, but there's nothing here that I'm seeing, uh, that's kind of an environmental action that the company's taking, right? Because usually most of our applicants have some sort of environmental methods they take beyond cost saving. And I wanted to ask you, since you brought up Sonoma Clean Power and working with them to reduce your footprint, if you can tell me tonight if you're planning to use or will commit to using Sonoma Clean Power's Evergreen Plan, that is the, uh, slightly more premium plan that's a hundred percent renewable, local renewable?
Uh, can I talk a little bit about, I just, I've been researching that with, uh, my name is Stefan, I'm talking. So, um, we were researching, there's two different, uh, renewable, uh, options, one's fifty percent renewable and the other one's one hundred percent.
Once the entry level clean start, you need to see the E fifty percent now, but that's the typical thing that everybody in the county has. So for example, all the municipal buildings in this town, many other towns in this county do step up for you additionally, it's two point five cents a kilowatt hour. I mean, for a typical residential person, maybe it's fifteen dollars a month, obviously for you it's more, but you're not a typical residential, uh, applicant either. So I, I was just curious if you'd made a decision or could commit to that tonight, because I'd be interested to hear that.
I would like to, uh, commit to the hundred percent, uh, renewable, I just don't, haven't done the calculations, know how much more it is, truthfully, and so, um, I would say for phase one, we could at least do the fifty percent, if not the hundred percent. We just, I haven't run the actual numbers on that yet, but ultimately-
It would be hard pressed not to do the fifty percent, because it's the default power that everybody gets as Sonoma Clean Power customers, so that's, that's almost unavoidable. Um, but yeah, I, I understand certainly, if you haven't done the calculations, I'm not going to make it, ask to make it a requirement tonight, I might ask staff in the future, when we have new businesses come in, particularly in the industrial area, if they're looking to expand their environmental footprint, if we could ask them to look into this first before they come, because that way they can speak to what they want to do. Uh, that, that would make it easier, I think, for us and for our applicants, so I, I would like to see that, hopefully you will go that way down the road, but I'm not going to make it a requirement, so I'd ask my colleagues to support that. One last question for staff. Heard, read the neighbor concern, uh, it sounds from what I'm hearing, there'll be very good odor control, but I just want to confirm if for some unexpected reason this became an ongoing problem that we could document. Uh, what tools do we have as a city to be able to deal with that if it becomes, actually did for some reason become a problem for neighbors?
Um, I would say first of all, we have the, the, the rules of the ordinance and cannabis around which you can operate, so that would be our first action, would be to make sure that they are complying with the ordinance as well as the conditions of approval, even though this is not a use permit, these, uh, these permits come with conditions. So we would, so essentially that's where we would first start. Assuming it was a chronic violation, I think it's important to remember that these come up for renewal every two years. So, um, and that discretion is usually given to the, the city manager to make that renewal. Um, but if it were like a chronic violation, then, then that would certainly be a factor in considering their renewal. They don't want problem businesses, especially with cannabis, we want to see cannabis be successful, so, you know, I, I don't foresee that with this particular business, so from what I've seen so far, but, um-
I don't either, I just wanted to draw that out, Mr. Harries, so in case any personally contact is the, one of their new neighbors that was concerned, to know that we, we've looked at this and we have not only assurances, but we also have tools to deal with it, so I think they can hopefully rest a little easier. So thank you all for your answers, that was helpful.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, and I'll just, JP already said this, but the renewal process is a very strong motivator for businesses to be good, um, good actors, because that's their livelihood if they don't, you know, if they, uh, flout the, the rules, for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just as a follow-on to that, um, we do have other businesses, I think this is more for JP, we have other businesses within the city, and have we had, um, any problems with those businesses and having, um, odor issues? I'm not recalling, um, any issues that I've heard of.
Um, I have not received any complaints, I have received, uh, complaints about litter, and I think it's from, and, and, um, smoking outside. Um, so we're, we're, you know, we're working to see what we can do about that, those are the complaints I've gotten. I would say, sometimes you can, you know, when, when the, like, uh, processing facility gets a delivery, they have to open the doors and there will be, uh, an odor that comes out, but I would say it's transitory, it's, you know, it doesn't last for long. Um, that's been my experience overall. Um, I've found that, at least in Katati, um, this gentleman's store, uh, was in Santa Rosa that he was complaining about, at least in Katati, yeah, um, really, I haven't noticed that to be a, a chronic problem here, and nor have I received complaints.
Well, thank you for that, because that was what my understanding was, and the same goes along with, um, because we ha, we do have multiple businesses, we have not seen a increase in crime or homelessness either in any establishments that we have had.
No.
Okay, that was also my understanding. So I guess, uh, um, in reference, uh, to this, um, Mr. Peralta and your group may have an opportunity here to, um, be a good neighbor with your neighbor, uh, it might be your first, um, first, uh, possibility to connect with them, um, and assure them of their concerns. Um, my question has to do with, I read in there about water consumption, I want to make sure, you know, especially since we're in a drought and, you know, water is really very precious at this point. As I read everything in there, it, it, am I correct that, um, you have a ninety percent recapture of your water, so in reality you're only using ten percent new water?
Kai, you want to jump in on that? For Stefan?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I can, I can jump in on it. So yeah, uh, in, in our system, uh, generally what we're doing is we're recapturing and processing all of the, the runoff water, uh, the estimation's about ten percent will be, uh, uptaken by the plants, well, eight percent will be uptaken by the plants and two percent loss will occur just from evaporation, um, and some of the water during the processing will actually need to be, uh, sent down to, uh, you know, wastewater, uh, just due to the, the, um, increase to dissolve solids in it. But yeah, we do have a system that, uh, that captures that, as well as we're capturing all of the, um, water that's coming off of our dehumidifiers, as well as the water that comes out of the air conditioning systems, and that is recirculated back in, which, uh, allows us to, uh, decrease that water intake, um, you know, total.
Thank you for that, because I think that that's one of the major concerns that folks have with, uh, the growth of cannabis, is that they see numbers like in your chart, and it makes it, you know, a little scary, the amount of water each plant uses, and so I think it's really important to highlight that ninety percent of that gets re, reused, it's not, uh, that amount of water every day for each plant.
Yes, they're right.
Thank you, and your application was really very complete, so I don't really have a whole lot of questions, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of questions for clarification. Um, if I understood the, the packet and reading that and looking at that light situation, um, were you starting out with, with all LED or were you starting out with other lights initially and then going to LED?
Our original plan was to start with, uh, some rooms of, uh, high-pressure sodium lights and migrate to the LEDs. Were, we put that in review right now because, uh, it really seems like the LEDs are a pretty easy transition, so we're running some tests, uh, we're coordinating with San Francisco now and running some tests, and, uh, we'd like to find a path just to step right into the LEDs, but we haven't completely crossed that bridge yet.
So I would like to add to the, uh, the incentive programs that PG&E is doing right now. I'm working with, uh, Ethan Clifford and Rich Ross from Energy Resources Integrated, ERI, and if we actually have a plan that dictates that we're going to be using HPS, and then we go to them and request an incentive program, it'll be easier for us to get the LEDs with a discounted rate that'll be more comparable to an HPS cost. So that's part of why we're doing it, um, it'll help us ultimately and save energy, and it's actually a better system, we just need to learn how to- We just need to learn how to use it with some of this R and D that we're doing currently in San Francisco. But our goal is to be all LED probably by the third year, I would say.
And likely sooner, in fact, perhaps out of the gate.
Okay.
And just to draw that out a little bit further, I feel like I'm leaving it a little ambiguous, but we, we really want to reduce the risk to the cultivation for the first rooms so that we can get them operating properly and get the cash flow coming back into the project. Because we're, you know, we're spending a lot of money to get things up and going and we, we want to minimize our risk for the first rooms. Though, as Stefan said, by doing the R and D in San Francisco, we, we feel like we'll likely be in a position to pull the trigger on that right out of the gate. We're just not prepared to do that tonight.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I read that correctly. And Mr. Delkirk, you are the founding member and CEO of Production Management Systems, one of eleven licensed cannabis cultivations in San Francisco and Halcyon Distribution. How many employees does that incorporate?
So we have currently ten employees. I would say most of them are thirty hours or more per week. And there's three sort of administrators. And then we also have some third party, we have a third party group that comes in, trims and helps us harvest. And they come in with six to eight people every twelve and a half days. So for the most part, we have a very solid ten employees. And then we have the, the growers, the master grower and then myself as sort of the senior executives. And we have almost a full time bookkeeper. So I guess it's actually closer to twelve.
For eleven cultivations?
No, no, we have one, one cultivation in San Francisco, one of eleven.
Oh, pardon me. Okay.
That was, that was original number from many years ago. I'm not sure if those are still existing, but we're, we definitely survived that transition from two thousand seventeen to eighteen during the regulations. So we, you know, we've come a long way and all of our current employees get benefits. And we're working on a profit sharing program at, at the moment with an IRA.
Okay. So the trimmers that come in at the seasons that you need them on the maturation of each of these particular crops, are those subcontracted employees?
Yeah, so it's, they're agriculture workers. They're, they have their own license and EIN number, they're an LLC. So we hire them as a subcontractor and they treat their employees really well. They're very organized and they actually work currently in other cultivations in Sonoma County. So they would be coming in with, say, a small van, probably with maybe ten people on a harvest day, which is probably once every two weeks. And they would come in in a clean way, in a very organized fashion, help us process our, our cultivation flowers and then leave. And they're very professional and we, we do a very good job.
And, and how do you regulate a living wage on those? In the contract of, for those people?
I could, so there's a, they're probably, I would, I can't assume that's not my business to be running that, but I'm pretty sure that they are paid at least twenty bucks an hour. But that would be a question for Fourcore and what's his name that's, and the owner of Fourcore and to ask him that question. Because trimming is, is so, there's a lot to do all at once. You really have to have a larger group come in and do it. Otherwise, it's, it gets beyond your capability and you have to hire a bunch, a lot more people on site. So it's not the model that we've worked on and doesn't work very well otherwise.
Okay, and yeah, the, I would like to see some, some information down the road on, on how you can support a living wage for those folks that are coming in. Because I know in the olden days, prior to the regulations, that many of those people were paid in product versus real money with wages and benefits, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that, that they are going to be receiving a living wage for this area that's guaranteed within the subcontract that you guys write up.
Okay, we can look at that. I'll contact Julian, who is the owner of Fourcore and see what he, if he has something to share with us.
That would be great. And when you talk about employee ownership, are you actually considering or looking at a employee stock option plan or ESOP?
Something that accomplishes the same result likely. I'm not sure if we'll do it with options or if we'll do it with actual shares, but we're, we're working on that now.
And, and I would imagine based on the business model, that that would be several years before you got to that point. But that's what we would love to see, I would think, so. Thank you very much for that. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to add that, again, for us, it's, we're building teams for the long term and really feel responsible ethically to be taking care of people, especially a business like this.
Thank you so much. And then the only other question I had was for Senior Planner Harris. Dare I ask, what type of business is that four twenty Aaron Street?
You know, I was funny, I don't know what is that four twenty. If you give me a moment, I can try to find out.
Because that seems to be the only concern we had that was not necessarily supportive of this business.
Yes, we did notice, we did notice all the businesses surrounding that are within three hundred feet were the ordinance. That was the only comment that we received.
The irony of that address is not lost.
I know it.
It's a, it's a, if I can interject, a design company is what currently has a business license at that address.
Thank you, Angela.
A design company, okay. So there could be some retail traffic there? I don't know.
I'm not familiar with the business. It's, it's, it's older than me here, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate the answers on there and thank you for the presentation. And I will bring it back to council, see if there's any comments or further questions or direction. Councilmember Ford?
My only question is whether there's a condition we could add that has to do with odor. Odor, odor doesn't appear in the conditions anywhere. And I'm sure it's in the, in the code somewhere that, that regulates. But maybe we could just add, add something in the building conditions that have to do with the odor management plan. So that, so that if there is an issue in the future, enforcement can point to the conditions and say, hey, your odor management plan isn't working.
Thank you, Ben. I think in the original ordinance, we did have the ability for the council to step in if there was enough complaints or concerns regarding that. Is that correct, Mr. Obed or Mr. Harris?
I think certainly on the renewal, I mean, I think it's a code enforcement issue primarily and complying with the ordinance. And beyond that, when you get to the two-year renewal mark, if they're a problematic business, then they could risk losing their license.
If there was an issue prior to the renewal, say a year in and we really had a concern, would the ordinance allow us to say we need to stop this and do an investigation and/or something along those lines?
So the cannabis ordinance, I believe, is, is a bit more general in that my recollection is that they have to, they have to develop a plan and implement it and it has to be effective. I don't think, to my, to my recollection, it doesn't have any particular standards in there because it's hard to develop an order standard in the ordinance. But, but the ordinance certainly requires that a plan be in place and be effective. So I think perhaps to Councilmember Ford's comment, it probably, it probably wouldn't hurt anything to add that condition and just would be another thing that we could use in code enforcement if that word ever come up.
Councilmember Ford?
Let's just kind of suggest some added wording to condition twenty, which is a building condition about the indoor air quality systems. They have a sentence at the end of that condition that says the design shall also ensure effective odor management.
Okay, and if there are no other further questions or concerns at the moment, I would be, I would be welcome to a motion.
Have we done public comment?
Yep. My apologies.
I couldn't remember for sure either. That's why I asked.
It was only since two thousand seventeen. I will open up for public comment at this time.
Lori Alderman, go ahead.
I have no problems with this, with the cannabis business. I do have a problem with Mark Landman, once again, making it seem like a condition of, of development coming in of it having the Evergreen program. He, without identifying himself as a founding director of Sonoma Clean Power. You can't put our city, the developments for your political gain, Mr. Landman. You want to be able to say, oh, oh, every business in Katati is Evergreen because of me. And that's not, we've had none of this kind of stuff over the years. You need to stop pressuring these businesses. Let them go with PG&E if they work with PG&E in San Francisco. Just, I'm so tired of all this. And, but other than that, sounds fine, Aaron Street, nobody goes down there. So anyways, thank you. Bye.
Thank you so much. And I think the concern was really on an environmental issue, so. With that in mind, and.
Mr. Mayor, I could quickly just reinforce that. I think as always, I was pretty, as clear as possible, I would not make that, nor would I support it being a condition unless the applicant had a chance to review it first. Although personally, I think it's a good idea. Not that it brings me any political gain, certainly not at eleven oh nine at night, but it does bring us also an environmental gain, which most of us recognize is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that in mind, I'd be, I would entertain any motions here with the amended ordinance.
I have to move, we adopt a resolution granting a commercial cannabis permit to Halcyon Enterprises.
And I'd be happy to step in.
With the condition that was added by Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, if you could do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Harris, and thank you applicants for your patience and understanding and best of luck. We have one more stat presentation on item eleven C for the presentation on the Water Advisory Committee, pardon me, we have two more. We have a design agreement for the West Side Street Project. We have a staff presentation on the Water Advisory Committee. Do we, are we going to have, do, does the council feel that we can take up both of these items and defer the closed session items to the next meeting? That's a question open to the council.
That would be fine.
If we move, if we move with all alacrity and defer the closed session, I'm willing to give it a try if my colleagues are.
Well, okay, sounds like we have a consensus on that. Laura?
Just real quick, does that mess up any timing for bidding on the street? I guess it doesn't mess, I'm sorry, it's late. But just to check with staff that that won't mess up any timing for them to put that one off?
We're not putting that off, I don't think.
My suggestion was to take up B and C and then defer the closed session items.
I misunderstood. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then we will move on to eleven B. Thank you, staff, for your patience.
I remember Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Next slide, please. This item is the two thousand twenty-one street maintenance project. And as the outline shows, I'm going to be giving a little bit of a recap on our five-year CIP and where this project and other projects fit into that CIP. Because we are laying out a pretty aggressive implementation of that plan. So we've got the five-year CIP, a description of the completed projects that were in that CIP, upcoming street projects, still pulling from that CIP. And then talking specifically about the West Side Street Construction Project and the staff's recommendation. Next slide, please. So the five-year CIP, we're doing on, every two years. And so last year was the creation of the CIP with the first year, two thousand twenty. And then the last year, the five years being two thousand twenty-four. And then the, the year in between, which is where we are now. We're just working our way through that, those, those projects. We're planning on having the next one be completed next year. So what you'll find in our budget process is the last two years or, yeah, two years of this improvement plan for this purposes of this year's budget will be placeholders because everything's moving up and leaving those free spots at the end. But that will be addressed next year when we do a more comprehensive CIP. It's informed by the Pavement Management Budget Options Report, which is, keeps us eligible for grant money, federal and state grant money. And that is on a two-year cycle as well. The, 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 the plan, as calculated last year, was to move the, our pavement condition index from fifty-three up to sixty-seven over that five-year period. We are currently at sixty. Next slide, please. So I'm not sure how much you can glean from this slide. But the color codes represent each of the five years. Try to get this onto one slide. If you look at two thousand twenty, that is the hub streets. And then the leg coming off is West Sierra Avenue. We managed to get to the named streets, the outer hub streets in two thousand twenty. And we delayed the inner hub streets and West Sierra Avenue. What we did there, well, let me just explain the projects first of all. Two thousand twenty-one are the orange, so refer to this as the two thousand twenty-one street project or the second year of the CIP. And that is that the one in question, the one that's the topic for tonight's consideration is West School Street all the way out. And we, we're going to talk about adding Richardson Lane to that. And then Clifford is this little connector here in West Katati Avenue. And then there's a little portion of Old Redwood Highway down here. Three is the green and these are the bird streets here on the north side of Myrtle. And then Aguirre Way, other roads, other neighborhood streets there on the south side of Myrtle Avenue. And that project is out to bid, we're opening bids on that next week, a week from tonight. And then we've got two thousand twenty-three is Cypress. And then we've got 2023 is Cypress. And 2024 is a cyan light blue color, which is really hard to pick up, but it's Redwood Drive towards the north of that figure. Next slide, please. This is more the philosophy slide, we can call it, for how we approach roadway projects. We've got over 200 segments of roadways, all in various conditions of wear and tear. And so there's approaches, methodologies to getting the most bang for the buck and trying to move our our street condition into the the preservation stage where we're just doing slurry seal at $6.50 a square yard. But to get there, we have to address the roadways that are in poor or very poor condition and do edge grind overlays, which is more expensive, $44 a square yard, and full depth reclamation, which is reconstructing the street. And those are $68. So if you see if if we get all the streets to be good, to very good conditions, every every year, we're just doing slurry seal at a fraction of the cost. So that's where we're trying to get to. And with that PCI, you know, we're at 60 now, as I mentioned. If we get it to 670, 70 plus, then we're well into the slurry seal preservation realm. Next slide, please. Okay, so with this slide, I just wanted to show the completed street projects. And as I already spoke to this, that the top line there is the outer or named streets. And that's what we we've completed, which was half of the first year of the CIP. And then the rest of these projects are more just to show these are safety efforts. We're not just doing street preservation. We're also have an arm of our department that's doing the bike pad safety. So we've got chirps at the signalized intersection there. There are yellow reflective tape, used that funding and so forth. And then the street, West School Street pathway. They don't improve our PCI, but certainly improve the quality of life of the citizens here in Katati. Next slide, please. Okay, so upcoming. The idea of when we were back up to 2020, we were uncertain about revenues. So we pulled the 2022 CIP out of order because it had more of the slurry seal preservation, the less expensive treatments. We thought, hey, we want to continue to make progress on our CIP, but we might not be able to afford the full depth reclamation or overlay, the more expensive treatment. So that's why we're seeing that pool and cutting in line here. So that is the one we're looking at opening bids on. And then the the one for tonight is the West Side Project is really the second year. And we're looking for consideration of approval for the design contract for that. And that design contract, as is typical of our street projects, will get us all the way through bidding. And then there's a component of that proposal that provides for engineering design services during construction, not to be confused with construction management. But sometimes it's 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 always useful to have the designer on board to to be on the other end of the phone call for certain intentions of the design or when questions come up during construction. And then the Quick Strike Program, Quick Strike Project is part, I don't want to lose anybody, this is part two of the first year. So this is the Inner Hub Street and the West Sierra Avenue. And we got news yesterday that the city's project has advanced. I the city's being asked to program $900,000 of grant money into the state's financial management program. So that, once it's in there, then we're going, then we can get Caltrans attention and get that process moving. So that's very good news on the Quick Strike. And $900,000 is is a considerable amount of money towards that that effort.
And I, Craig, I'll just add too that the that the programming request came today. So that's just breaking news as of today, basically.
Yes. Time flies. I thought that yesterday was today, but or today was yesterday.
It'll be tomorrow soon.
Yes, we're in COVID time. So looking, just addressing the schedules of the three of these. We're looking to have the street preservation, you know, the ones on either side of Myrtle done by June or July. And then West Side, we're looking to follow that just on the heels of that project completion. Probably August, September, a little bit of October. And then the Quick Strike, just because of the the process of going through the Caltrans local assistance process with the federal money, we're looking at getting, submitting the the request for authorization to construct in November 1st and then getting notice back from that in January or early February. So we're looking at springtime, early summer of constructing the Quick Strike. Next slide, please. And then that's not all. There's still the fourth and fifth year of the CIP, which we were looking to make progress on as well. And so that is the Redwood Drive generally in Cypress Avenue. We're just looking to combine those. And that will position us for federal money because those roads are federally eligible roadways. So it looks like soon after July 1st, and depending on the the budget sessions we have, staff will be proposing to include the design of these two two projects into the the budget for fiscal year 21, 22. And then, like I had said before, once we get into this time next year, we'll be looking at a revamped five-year CIP because we've got those two. And then at that point, three years of sort of freed up space that we could pull in brand-new projects from the Pavement Management Program into our five-year CIP. Next slide, please. All right. So that was a lot of background. And here we are on the project on in hand. So this is a West Side Street Project scope. And it again talks about the west, this West School Street going up the 100, next to the 101 freeway. Makes a makes a left under the west. And then that piece of cyan or bluish is the add-on. We decided to add that on. It's not in the CIP. But while we're doing full-depth reclamation, we might as well have the contractor go through and do Richardson Lane. The little crossover street here is Clifford, and then that gets us over to West Katati Avenue, all his FDR. And then the the goal at the end is a little less treatment. I think it's slurry seal digouts. It's that road, that little stretch is in better shape, so it doesn't need the full FDR treatment. And then we've got a piece of roadway here on Old Redwood Highway. And we try to avoid this. But it's it's not good to combine an FDR street treatment with slurry seal. The contractor would have to go out and get this whole train of equipment for FDR. And so we might as well lump that with the FDR project here rather than the street preservation project. So that's why we see those, the Condor, this is just a little cul-de-sac here in the Bird Streets, and Robin. And then John Roberts, which is a pretty beaten-up street down down there at the bottom. So this constitutes the the design, and we're looking to get that going really quickly. Actually have a kickoff meeting set up next week in anticipation of a favorable vote tonight, just to get this this moving because it is an aggressive schedule. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah. And if you wanted to see a specific list of the roadways, it's on packet 178, 179. Another element of the West Side Project is the pathway. I know many of us from the office will go down West East School Street through the tunnel and, you know, want to walk up over this hill and then down to West Sierra Avenue to make a loop here. And it does get a little bit dicey walking along here, along the shoulder. There is a right-of-way next to the Caltrans fence and the asphalt dike to walk. But this project includes paving that piece, so we have a proper pathway off the travel lane. Next slide, please. Okay, so specifically, what is being called for tonight are actions on two projects. It's combined into one one action. It's the design contract with Harrison Associates. And we're looking for a notice of the schedule would be, as I mentioned, with with construction happening in August and then being completed in early November or late late October. And then coupled with that, because it's reconstruction, we have a pavement materials testing requirement that just to see, to confirm the deflection on the pavement and confirm the type of FDR overlay is in fact what we're looking for there. Next slide, please, which I think is the recommendation summary slide. So that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Looks like we have a question. Vice Mayor Liman, or comment?
Well, I kind of thought I was tired, but I'm feeling pretty energized. I think a lot of people watching this might not understand, if anybody's watching this hour. But this is, I won't completely quote President Biden when he was a vice president. I will just edit that and say, this is a really big deal. For a city our size, in a couple of years, to be knocking on the door of hitting 67 for PCI and knocking distance from there to just being in slurry seal land. And the benefits that will provide this city and the future city council and staff going forward in the future, that's a huge accomplishment. So I I think it's really good news. Not that we caught up from the delays we prudently encumbered during COVID just to be safe. But we're actually exceeding our planned performance metrics now with this. So this is all, this is all just a good thing. And I'm really grateful for the walking path up the side of West School. Those of us who live in the neighborhood, walk or drive in the neighborhood, we know people walk there all the time. Sometimes they're solitary, sometimes they're pairs, sometimes they're bicyclists, often dog walkers. And I get it, the reason they walk this, even though it's not a good place to walk right now, is this creates a nice, large loop that goes through West Katati and allows to point further west from there, as well as then back into the City Hall Faletti Ranch neighborhoods. So I think doing this the right way like this is going to bring a lot of benefit to the public. So quick, two quick questions. When we do that new path, I imagine we'll probably be using natural pavement, the same stuff we've been using for our paths that we used over in Richardson and across from City Hall. I just want to confirm, can we pick up that 90 feet or so of asphalt that currently connects from the tunnel to the end of Clifford? So this can all match. I think that would be a prudent thing to do if we're going to do this and dig up the whole street. This is a very small portion, but I think that would be the right thing to do. And I just wanted to confirm, so I'm really pleased to see we're going to go after the John Roberts sinkhole. But I just want to make sure, there's been a water coming from somewhere for years. And I hope we, whoever does the work knows that this isn't just a runoff. There's something going on with that one portion of the speed there. So I I I hope that staff will alert them to vet that one very carefully because otherwise we'll be back out there. So thanks much for the presentation. I think this is just great.
Thank you. I don't know if we have any further questions from the council members for Mr. Scott. I'm not seeing any at the moment. Vice Mayor Liman, I'm guessing this has nothing to do with Sonoma Clean Power?
I don't even have a comeback. It's too late. But no, it does not. And I don't think I get any political gain, although I will say I think between the stop signs down there and the roads in the neighborhood, this one particular part of Katati would be very happy. And seeing as there are one or two people from years have indicated that we haven't put sufficient attention here, I don't know if I agree with that. But I think that becomes a very moot point with this. So I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will say that when we do that walking loop, we do charge our iPods with evergreen power. So that's the time.
Terrific. So with that in mind, and no further questions, I would entertain a motion on this.
Public comment?
Pardon me, I don't have any attendees showing, but I will open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. We have no attendees. No public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
Sorry for the delay. Force a habit. I would be happy to move a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Harrison Associates to provide professional services through bidding for the West Side Street Project, approving funding for pavement materials testing, and authorizing the city manager to execute that agreement and any needed amendments up to the approved budget amount.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Burgess, if you would do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Heck, yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. That will move us to the last regular agenda item, the Staff Presentation on the Water Advisory Committee. Call for 20% voluntary conservation and provide direction to the city's WAC member, and I believe this was Mr. Scott.
Yes, Craig Scott.
Thank you.
Again, so this this I think this item is for the council to provide the city's Water Advisory Committee member with direction for an action headed plan for Monday, this coming Monday's WAC meeting. Calling for all water users to reduce water use by 20%. Now, Susan, Councilmember Susan Harvey is our WAC member, and she's also the chair of the WAC. So the region is experiencing its second consecutive critically dry year, and the water stores reservoirs at historically low levels for this time of year. The city and other municipal water users receiving wholesale water from Sonoma Water are members of the Sonoma Water Saving Partnership. The partnership's goal is to have an effective, long-term water conservation program and believes this is done by having a coordinated effort rather than implementing individual programs. Now, this approach has been very effective with achieving water savings. Amazingly, demand has been reduced 31% since 1997, despite the population growth and over 20% since just like 2009. This built-in water efficiency, however, will make it difficult to achieve additional short, even if it's short-term savings. It's a phenomenon called demand hardening, where there's just less and less opportunity for additional water savings. On the heels of last year, Sonoma Water looked to preserve water in Lake Mendocino and submitted a temporary urgency change petition to the state to, well, the petition allowed Sonoma Water to reduce releases from Lake Sonoma. And despite that, the reservoir has dropped to historically low levels. And by October 1st, is projected to be so low as to impact operations of that reservoir. That the temporary urgency change order expires July 1st. So the water agency has informed all of the contractors that another petition is being prepared to limit releases from both Lake Mendocino and Lake Sonoma for the period of July 1st through November 1st, so a four-month period of time. And Sonoma Water is to preserve water, not just from reduced releases, but water use reductions. Okay, so so the water is preserved in the reservoirs, not just from reducing releases, but also from reductions in water use. And so in that petition, they will be asking or proposing to the state, hey, we're going to help preserve water also by calling on 20% reduction in use from from all of our contractors, our water. 20% reduction in use from, from all of our contractors, our water, the people we supply water to. And so we don't know how the state will react to that, if they'll accept the 20% or call for something more. We very much doubt that they'll be calling for, saying, hey, you know, we'll take your 20%, but 10% is fine. They'll probably up that to either keep it the same or have it more as a condition of the petition. So the drought condition has been recognized by the state and county actions in recent weeks and days, right? So on April 21st, I think everybody saw Governor Newsom standing in the dry lake bed at Lake Mendocino, which should have been under 40 feet of water just last week, and proclaim the state of emergency for the region. And then just as today, as we've seen our phones ringing, the county declared a drive emergency. So as a member of the partnership, city staff is endeavoring to push out the partnership's water-saving message through its newsletter, which just went out today, and the Water Smart Customer Portal, and our website, and soon will be posting on social media outlets. The, the city's ordinance does provide for three stages of water shortage conditions. And so we'll be coming forward, staff, at probably the next council meeting with a resolution of our own, calling for at least a stage one, which is a 10% voluntary. The next one is a, it steps up in severity. So we'll, we're working our way through that. But the matter at hand is for council to provide the, the WAC member Susan Harvey with a direction on, on which, on voting on the water, the resolution that the WAC is going to take up on its Monday meeting to call on contractors to reduce water use by 20%. So that's, that's all I have for the presentation. We have to respond to questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, did you want to add anything to that as the WAC member?
I want to add my thanks to Craig and the rest of the TAC members. They've worked really hard on this. I know that they had some different methodologies they were looking at and different things like that. And so they have worked very well together to get us to this point. And now I think that, you know, we're all in this together, and we have to do the best that we can to try and conserve this water. So, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I would be looking for some direction on the council to support the presentation.
Through the mayor, I'd be happy to direct our representative to support the WAC resolution at their May 3 meeting.
I don't know that we need a motion on that, Mr. Barker, or just direction on a consensus?
That's right. Give direction to our member, then.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on that direction?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks, you okay with that?
Yeah, see, missed my beautiful thumbs up.
Oh, there we go.
But of course, you have a camera next to him.
You missed my, on the screen, that's all.
Exactly. I can't see everybody on the screen. So it looks like we have a direction on that, Councilmember Harvey.
Well, that's good, because it wouldn't look very good if the chair of the WAC sent out your resolution. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Okay.
And now, city manager's report, Mr. Ovid?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, member of the council. So I'll be, try to speed through this and do it in a Cliff Notes fashion. So vaccinations, COVID, everyone over 16, 16 and over eligible, of course, now. 63% of Sonoma County residents are, over 16 are partially vaccinated, and we anticipate reaching 50% fully vaccinated by next week. So it's still moving, which is good. You probably read that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has been cleared for use again. We do continue to be in the orange tier, the case rates at 2.5 per 100,000. We need to get to two or less to get into yellow. But the governor has also said that the color tier system is likely to go away on June 15th. So probably by the time we get to yellow, it'll go away, anyway. But I don't know, maybe we'll get to bask in the glow of yellow for a day or two before the governor eliminates the color tier system. In any case, we're still expecting that there will be some restrictions masking other types of things, even in the absence of the color system. But it's unknown right now what that'll entail exactly. On the public work side of things, you probably have all seen that they've started working on the three-way stop at West Sierra and School Street. So that's underway right now. Bids are opened a week from today on the street preservation project in the Bird Section that Craig mentioned, as well as the community center reroute project, so near roof from Civic Center. And we expect those to begin in late May and extend through mid-July in terms of construction. As you just heard, it's a historically low level, or low level of rainfall this year. So, and just today, the county proclaimed a drought. And as you heard, next Monday, the WAC will issue a voluntary call for conservation up to 20%. So all the contractors through the Sonoma Marine Water Saving Partnership are ramping up the public information and conservation programs. So more to come. This is just the start of it. On the street safety, that LRSP website has been live for a while. We've gotten a lot of comments on it already, even sort of through word of mouth, not really through any concerted public outreach at this point. But we did finally get that up on the website, once we got the public information from our contractor. And it's also in the utility newsletter, that's going to be out in utility bills here in the next couple weeks, as well as, it's been on the headlines, like I think I mentioned on the website. Public comment will extend through July 1st. So if anyone hasn't had a chance to enter their comments into that website, they still have until July 1st to do it. And then just to note that next Monday, Community Development is going to be back at the Planning Commission discussing the objective design guidelines. So that's also going on. And then for the police, we did the drug takeback, the prescription drug takeback program. And it was, it was last Saturday, and it was incredibly popular. In fact, we, we had, at noon, the five bins that we started with were completely full. And so we had to get more bins rushed to us on Saturday. And we managed to fill another, another six. So we got 11 bins total, 410 pounds of pills, which is unbelievable. It's a lot of, you know, it's a lot of medication. And there's still more out there. So we're looking at continuing to do that. In addition to our, our regular drug takeback program, also doing this probably twice a year. And then just real quick notes on recreation, we have our Aikido and Zumba Gold back, and that's going. We have tennis classes and camps as soon as May at Sunflower Park. And then Camp Gattati registration is open. Every week of camp is currently between 25% and 50% full. We expect more signups the next few weeks. And we're also hosting multiple children's theater camps this summer for ages four to 18, and gymnastics camps for children ages four to eight. And then Farmer's Market will be coming back in June on Wednesday evenings. So that's going to be ramping up again, which is nice. And then I'll just leave it with that. But any questions on recreation programs, of course, you always can contact Ashley Wilson at awilson@gattatiscity.org, or information's also on our website and Facebook pages. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. Ovid. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one comment and one question. My one comment is, it is awesome that the citizens of Gattati chose to put their drugs with that program, rather than flushing them down the toilet and getting them into our wastewater and/or putting them in the landfill. So the citizens should be very proud of that work that they've done. And then my question is, do we know what's happening at the old Dos Amigos? When you said roof, it made me think, when I drove by, like, there's no roof.
Yeah, so we just, due to a building permit for a, a new restaurant there, and Noah can correct me if I get this wrong, but I believe it's wood-fired pizza and perhaps beer on tap, that type of thing? Is that correct, Noah?
That's what I've been told so far.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Real quick, Mr. Ovid, just going back to the redwood trees. I know we had a very quick comment at the beginning. I was wondering, and appreciate that, just wondering if it would be possible next time to get a little more information about why the alternatives we looked at weren't going to work, just because I think there's a lot of confusion about that in the community. So it would be helpful to be able to tell them specifically, just I think if they had more information, it would, it would be better. So just a request for next time. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. And I'd be happy to follow up with that gentleman that was here tonight. But the short version basically is one of them just wouldn't be safe to do. And then the other one would probably only solve, it would be really expensive and only solve the problem for five years, and then it would be back in the boat again. The bottom line is the trees were just planted in a really bad location.
Thank you. Thank you. If the council's okay, I would offer that we move our city council member reports to our next meeting, unless there's something timely that needs to be presented. I'm not seeing any objections, so we're okay with that. Okay. Any public comment on non-action agenda items? I don't see any attendees.
No public comment.
Thank you. And no information received after agenda was posted?
No.
Thank you. We're deferring our closed session items to our next meeting. And I thank you all for your patience and your participation. It is 11:49, and we are adjourning the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.